Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening. How are you?
I am well, thank you.
Well, we survived another year, huh?
Yes, indeed.
The tree lighting was a nice event.
It was beautiful. And the weather was nice, so that was good.
Yes, we've had inclement weather previously.
Yes, we've had slush vests before.
Exactly. Well, we're close to setting a record. I think our record is 650 pages.
Wow. We can thank our budget department for providing us with such a healthy portion of our package.
Good evening, Councilmember Sparks. Councilmember Ford.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello, everyone.
Hi, Ben. Hi, Laura.
Hey there.
Susan and I were just chatting about how the tree lighting was a nice event.
It was. It's a lot of fun. Good crowd, it seemed to me.
I ate too many candy canes. But besides that, it was good.
Oh, no. How's City Hall doing tonight, Ben?
Still standing.
It's a little chilly out there tonight, isn't it?
It's always bright and sunny and warm right here.
Oh.
Can't you see?
You have to ask Laura about that. It's an astronomical abnormality.
It's related to the procession of the Axis tilt and some other things you wouldn't understand.
If we were in the Southern Hemisphere, it'd be completely different.
Or it could be a geosynchronous mirror that's in orbit up there.
That's right. That's right.
Maybe so.
Looks like we're just waiting on the Vice Mayor.
It was not my day to keep track of him.
Nor mine. We'll give him just a few more minutes, and if not, he can log in when he's available.
Well, we know how Zoom is always a challenge.
Well, and I'm sure he's really dying to hear the announcements again. Hey, man, do you want to give him a text and see if he's having technical difficulties?
Sorry?
Yes.
On another note, Steph Curry broke the all-time three-pointer record tonight.
Did he?
Yep.
Uh, how many points is that?
He has now hit 2,900 and some three-point shots in his career. And counting.
So that's almost 10,000 points?
Yep.
Wow.
I've hit a three-pointer once.
Played CYO as a kid and never made a basket.
And your son, too. Mr. Mayor, can I ask Lauren a technical question?
Certainly.
Uh, Lauren, our attendees show four attendees, but I only see three.
Sometimes that happens. I think there might be a little time delay in some of the Zoom part of this meeting.
Okay.
That is strange.
Yeah, usually they should. Yeah. Thank you.
Oh, and there's the fourth one.
Perhaps if someone has connected but needs to turn on their mic or turn, do some, click some OK button somewhere. It doesn't quite have their name yet.
Yeah, it's kind of interesting that it showed, it updates the number, but not the name quickly. That is interesting. A feature, I'm sure.
So Vice Mayor Lammon was just having technical issues, but he should be hopefully joining soon.
Okay, I'll go ahead and start the meeting, and then he can join in when he's there. So welcome, everyone, to the joint meeting of the Kattati City Council and the Successor Agency to the former Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency for Tuesday, December 14th, 2021, our last meeting of the year. We were hoping that at one point we would have a live meeting this year, but that did not occur. So welcome, everyone. And Ms. Burgess, if you would kind of give us a roll call.
Councilmember Harvey.
Here.
Councilmember Sparks.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
And I don't see Vice Mayor Lammon quite yet. And Mayor Moore.
Here. Thank you very much. We'll go ahead and announce when he gets in. Thank you. At this moment, then we'll go ahead and do a pledge of allegiance. The pledge allegiance to the flag.
The flag.
United States of America. And to the Republic. For which it stands. One nation.
One nation.
Under God. Indivisible. With liberty.
With liberty.
And justice for all. Thank you. So at this moment, I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes of the Kattati City Council regular meeting, November 23rd, 2021.
Move to approve?
I'll second.
So we have a motion in a second, Ms. Burgess, if you please give us a roll call.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
And do we have Vice Mayor Lammon yet? And Mayor Moore?
Yes, thank you very much. So I'll move on to announcements, and that might give Vice Mayor Lammon an opportunity to talk again, so. Meeting orientation for new attendees and viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted City Council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items, where the City Council will consider the item and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizen's business item, which is the designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The City Council may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the City Council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any of the statements that the City Council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposefully biased. Measure S supports police services, a variety of recreation programs for all ages, and the maintenance of our streets, parks, and public buildings. See details on the web at kattatacy.org. Citizens interested in receiving City Kattati community alerts via text or emails are encouraged to sign up with Nixle by downloading the mobile app from the iOS or Android App Store or by texting your zip code to 888-777. Like always, we'd love to hear from you, so please feel free to contact the city at 707-792-4600 or info@kattatacy.org. If you have a non-emergency issue after normal business hours, you can contact us at 707-792-4611. And of course, if you have an emergency, please contact 911. Continue to look for updates on the city's website and social media channels available on Facebook, Instagram, Nixle, and Nextdoor. And we'll move on to approval of the final agenda. Mr. O'Bitt, are there any changes to the agenda?
Thank you, Mayor. No proposed changes tonight.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to citizens' business and public comment for consent calendar items. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on a consent calendar or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy 2021-01, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes and land per person for matters not on the agenda and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time for a reasonable time where disability accommodation has been requested. So at this time, we will open it up to citizens' business.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. Looking to our attendees tonight, please use your raise hand icon, or if you're dialing in, dial star nine. Mayor Moore, that will end public comment.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to consent calendar. I'll open this up for discussion, or if there's any consideration for any items to be pulled from the consent calendar. If not, I would entertain a motion to the consent calendar.
I would move to approve the consent calendar.
Second, though?
Thank you. So we have a motion in a second. Ms. Burgess, if you would give us a vote, please.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes. Thank you very much. I'll move on to direction of future agenda items. And I have to move my cat because I can't see if any hands are up. Councilmember Harvey?
Uh, yes, I would like us to consider changing our ordinance having to do with electric charging to look at including the electrical vehicle infrastructure training program. It's a good program. It is one that helps certified individuals that are installing electrical vehicle charging. It is not onerous. It is an 18-hour certification. And it can, the actual classes apparently can be done online with the testing in person. So I think considering we're talking about some high voltage electricity, I think it behooves us to have people that are certified and qualified in doing this. So I'm hoping that we will consider this. It was adopted in Petaluma already, so.
And is this for new electric vehicle owners?
It's for charging stations. So they actually go through a certification on how to install the charging stations. And it, and it covers all different brands and models and things like that.
I think that makes sense.
It seemed to make sense to me also.
And no other future agenda items at this moment? Okay. So now we can move on to public hearings. And the first one is a introduction of an ordinance to amend the city's land use code to create a WUNIF Living Street Design Standard for multifamily, mixed use, and other private developments citywide. And I believe this would be under Mr. Housh.
Thank you, Mayor Moore, members of the council. Uh, thank you, Lauren, for bringing up the staff report or the presentation. Uh, so yeah, as the mayor has identified, tonight's item is a consideration and proposed first reading of standards to create a WUNIF. And Lauren, I'm going to ask you to advance the slides for me. We'll go to the next one. Um, as identified, it's a consideration, first reading of an ordinance, and it would modify the Kattati Municipal Code, Section 17.36.100. Currently, driveways and site access standards are listed there. And I just wanted to include a brief definition or a portion of the definition from the ordinance. It's a shared-use space designed equally for pedestrians, bicycles, and recreational uses that may allow slow-moving automobiles and other vehicles, and motorists are considered guests within a WUNIF. I also want to identify that this is relatively unique ordinance in that there are no local land use standards for WUNIFs. This will be a relatively new thing for Sonoma County. However, in doing some research for it, it is gaining popularity throughout the United States and is definitely a common use in Europe. So we'll go to the next slide. Just to provide some background, there's a fairly significant amount of background on it. The commission considered this first as a part of the creation of the Objective Design Standards in May through a community workshop, and then in June at a public hearing. And then that went to the City Council, also as a part of the Objective Standards. The WUNIF concept really got a lot of attention at that presentation, you will recall. And there was a lot of questions raised by the City Council, and they directed staff to come back with some additional information. We'll go to the next slide. Staff brought that back in September, and the council really liked the idea, but rather than including it as a part of the open space menu of options as it was originally drafted, council directed staff to prepare an ordinance to generally require WUNIFs throughout the city for certain multifamily and mixed-use projects. So staff took that direction. The Objective Standards were adopted without the WUNIF standards. And then on November 1st, a separate ordinance was brought before the Planning Commission. And then on November first, a separate ordinance was brought before the Planning Commission at a public hearing to create standards for Vunifs as a standalone, as is presented in the ordinance before the council this evening. And that's why we're here to consider it. So we'll go to the next slide. So just briefly, there's kind of four main principles of a Vunif. This slide does a good job, or this photograph does a good job of kind of highlighting them. So they all have visible entrances to delineate the space from the traditional automobile drive aisle. And this is done usually with a combination of signs, different types of paving, traffic calming features. And really, it's intended to just highlight that it's a shared space with automobiles, pedestrians, and cyclists. And then also even it functions as a play court in some areas. They include physical barriers to ensure the comfort of all the users that are in this shared area. So there's meanders or chicanes. Within the travelway, there's bollards to really provide additional protection for certain areas. There's planters, there's landscaping. All of that combined to really delineate the different areas within the Vunif and also to really slow down automobile traffic. It's a shared and paved space both. So all users have equal access to all areas, with the exception of those separated out with bollards to protect certain kind of pedestrian amenities. But the hardscape provides kind of a universal design element. So folks in wheelchairs can easily access all features and points of it. Bicycles, pedestrians, as we've mentioned. And then there's inclusion of landscaping and furniture to kind of really add to the sense of place, provide additional amenities, and just again, make sure it's usable to all different types of folks. So we'll go to the next slide. So these slides are going to kind of, we're going to have a number of just photograph examples. This one is from Holland, so Vunif is a Dutch word, meaning living street or multi-use zone, and so that's exactly the language we used in the ordinance. And they're often created through either converting an existing street or modifying a historic area that may have had housing that was built prior to the automobile. And so it's kind of can go either way with regards to how they are built. And this photograph is really an embodiment of what the intent of a Vunif is. It incorporates landscaping, it's got some parking, outdoor open space separated by bollards, but then also very easily shared and traversed by pedestrians and cyclists. And it's really, and it includes defined areas using separate paving. And it's got forced traffic calming through the chicane or meander features. So then we really, you know, this is just kind of seemed from the staff perspective as really what we're trying to get with these types of policies. And we'll go to the next slide. As we mentioned, or I mentioned, this is a unique ordinance. Most American or US examples are kind of intended or utilized currently to create nicer areas within commercial shopping districts. So this is an example from Illinois, but it has all the features of a Vunif and as proposed in the current ordinance. It's got its curbless design, it's got landscaping throughout and into the street. It's got pedestrian and bicycle amenities, distinct paving to separate the spaces. If we go to the next slide, this is another photo of the same Illinois commercial district. But it just clearly shows that the landscaping, the pedestrian features, the unique paving all serve to really create a nice usable area for all types of users, whether they're automobile drivers, or bicyclists, or pedestrians. And then the next slide is a small two-block infill Vunif example in Santa Monica. Similar, it's got landscaping as some of the traffic calming features. You know, going out into the narrowed street, it uses the paving. It seems to, in the distance, you can see kind of an entry feature. And I do apologize, it's one of the things that I haven't touched on with the other photos, but it's really important to have a distinct entry for the automobile to really understand that they're entering a unique area where they need to pay special attention, and it's going to be utilized by more different users than just automobiles. We'll go to the next slide. So this is what I would describe as a less successful example from Houston. It includes many of the traffic calming features, the street meanders, it's got landscaping all the way down to the travel aisle, unique paving, but it doesn't have the amenities or the things that would really drive a person, or pedestrians, or cyclists to kind of linger here and really use the space. We'll go to the next slide. This photo is from the staff report, and it's basically, as identified, it was maybe the article that it came from was saying it might intended to serve as a Vunif, but it's really just a nice parking lot. It does have some of the paving distinctions, but you can tell that this is auto-dominated, auto-oriented. It might have a couple features trying to provide some additional pedestrian benefit. You can see down there in the bottom left, there's some bollards and what's probably a pedestrian walkway. But this is, this is just a parking lot, and this is not what we're going for. So we'll go to the next slide. One of the only local examples of the built environment that we could find is here at the Tower Apartments just out of town on East Katari in Rutter Park. But it does include many of the features of a Vunif. It has a unique paving, and Lauren, if you go to the next slide, there's a little slightly different view. Unique paving, has landscaping down to the drive aisle, it does utilize curbs. But there's bollards where there is a curbless portion for folks to be able to go across open space. And it's distinct from the traditional drive aisle. And if we go to the aerial photo, this is really kind of shows. So you have the circulate, the vehicular circulation surrounding the development, and then kind of an extension of the open space is the Vunif, but it does allow some vehicular circulation to come through, and it serves as an emergency vehicle access if it were necessary to get to that middle portion of the development. We'll go to the next slide. This is a similar example in that it has a traditional vehicular circulation around the development, and that's labeled Riggs Park Place there. So you can see that's kind of one of the pedestrian, or I'm sorry, the automobile circulation with the beige portion being a mixed-use building. So ground-floor commercial with multi-story residential above it. The orange roofs are actual kind of rowhouse, single-family homes. And then the purple are covered parking, but then you can see that mural walk kind of walkway feature between that serves as the Vunif for the multi-use zone. So it is separate and distinct from the automobile circulation. And if you go to the next slide, the rendering kind of shows how the amenities of that will serve to provide kind of an expanded space for the folks who live on it, definitely slow down the traffic, and it's not an area where that's only a car, so you're more comfortable as a pedestrian or cyclist. But it does allow that vehicular circulation, whether for EVA or internal automobiles to get around to maybe some of the other parkings. So then, we'll go to the next slide. And then this is just really the traditional, or back to Holland, traditional Dutch Vunif. True shared space, clearly delineated from the traditional auto circulation area, utilizes bollards, it's got some landscaping. There is some parking there, so it recognizes that there may be some benefits to allowing folks to park close to their front doors. But mainly, it, or it's clearly intended to serve as a shared space amongst all different use types. And then finally, we have a similar example from England where they call them home zones, but this also uses the delineated paving, landscaping all the way down to the drive aisles, traffic calming through meanders in the street. And you can see that how some of them can accommodate a fair amount of parking, although it's worth noting, our ordinance only allows parallel parking, so it would not allow this on its surface. So now we'll get into some of the specifics of the ordinance. And so it's required in new multifamily and horizontal mixed-use developments that have these private internal driveways only utilized within the project. So if it's, if it's a shared driveway going across property lines in multiple projects, that is not seen as appropriate for the Vunif. Again, intended for areas that function as an internal street or alley where the car is not the predominant element. And we want them to be close to the residential entries and common areas. So it kind of adds further benefit to the folks who live in the development to have additional usable space. We did provide a minimum of a hundred square feet of Vunif per unit. Full parking space is about two hundred square feet, so just to give you an image of about how much land that really is per unit. And then it has all the distinctive features that I've been talking about through the photograph examples. We'll go to the next slide. So there are some specifics. So we wanted between twenty feet and sixty feet as a transition between when you're on a standard street or drive aisle into the Vunif. And then in all cases, a minimum of twenty-foot clear sight distance, which is about one car length, to see that you're entering into this unique living street area. You have to have traffic calming measures at a minimum spacing. And then obviously, we need emergency vehicle access throughout. There was a minimum width that, and the Planning Commission had some concerns and provided some input on that. So staff has removed that from the ordinance before the council. Go to the next slide. Few of the more specific elements are a minimum length of sixty feet, maximum of three hundred. If this reference, the, it should be continuous curbs are eliminated to emphasize it's a shared space and get that in that universal design features. Incorporate seating, landscaping, and other pedestrian and decorative amenities along the full length. Decorative pavement, pavement along the full length also. And then you can do parking within or adjacent to, but it's intermittent and should be used as traffic calming. Go to the next slide. So as I mentioned, the project did receive some comments and input from the Planning Commission and general public. Generally, those were voicing full support for the creation of these standards, but then wanted some concerns over safety. Mr. Hancock, Planning Commissioner Hancock, speaking as an individual, provided a comment with some specific changes that was forwarded onto the council, was attached to this report. And then we did receive a comment from Marlena Echo, who just expressed full support. Again, some of the concerns that we had to grapple with are lack of applied examples. And then trying to struggle with where this is required and how it's required versus just an allowed design. So those are the things that we really kind of struggled with as we were drafting up the ordinance. And so we'll go to the next slide. When we presented the draft to the Planning Commission, they provided some distinct direction, consider changes to the width requirements to allow more flexibility. Staff also likes that because the original ordinance seemed to anticipate two-way traffic. And it seems like this could definitely serve as a single, you know, one-way traffic feature. It actually could be very successful in that way, I think. So allowing flexibility in the width would allow to kind of a narrower drive aisle intended to serve one-way traffic. We, there was, there was some references to automobile driver priorities, basically a reference to being concerned over driver frustration that gets to some of the safety elements. Play Commission and the public asked us to remove that, so that came out. And then just further direction to support complete multi-moldal design within the Vunif itself. So bikes equals pads equals automobiles. And so we really tried to do that with the design. And it talks about what we did when we responded to that direction. And so with that, it is recommended by the Planning Commission and Community Development Department that the city council hold a public hearing and conduct the first reading of the ordinance to amend the land use code to adopt Vunif Living Street Multi-Use Zone Standards for multifamily and mixed-use developments. I'm happy to answer any questions. That concludes my presentation. And yeah, really excited to bring this unique land use code and interested to hear the discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Hausch. I do like to point out that you said that there was no other local communities around here that have these Vunifs. So.
That's correct. So all the examples we have were some of the east coast communities, Illinois, and some in Southern California. And then actually, Anchorage, Alaska, has some standards on Vunifs. So it's unique, but it is getting traction. And as I mentioned, primarily used to enhance kind of commercial shopping districts so far.
Well, again, Katari is trendsetter on the local scene. Thank you very much for that presentation. That was a nice job on that. At this point, I do have some questions or comments from the council. So Councilmember Sparks?
Thank you so much. Thank you for bringing this report, and I'll hold any discussion till later. I just had some clarifying questions. One of them was about the non-allowability of non-parallel parking. And you said that it was not allowed, but there is sort of some reference to it on, in section three point one, three point four. It talks about non, you can have a certain number of non-parallel spaces as long as they're spaced out.
My apologies. You are correct. So just, I was not the original staff on it, so.
Okay.
My apology, I misspoke.
No, okay. So there is some of that allowed. And then can you clarify what, what, I just, my reading comprehension skills are failing me about the the garage. If there's an enclosed garage, then there are non-parallel spots. Can you just help me understand like what that would look like, or? It's a little unclear on that section.
Just give me one second.
It's on page, sorry, I lost my page number. Because on packet page three oh three. Oh, no. Sorry, that's not the ordinance.
So I'm looking at section one E. And it talks about the areas that are double-loaded, open parking lot are not appropriate spaces for Vunifs. So that's the bad example in the staff report that showed the, basically, the nice parking lot. But if you were accessing covered parking on one side, then that could be a location for Vunif design.
So in section three, four, on page three oh three, it says, "Non-parallel parking spaces adjacent to the Vunif shall be single-loaded unless at least one side is located within fully enclosed garages." That's the part I don't quite understand. So if you've got fully enclosed garages on one side, then you can have.
Tandem parking.
Like in front of the garage, or on the other side of the street from the garage, or that's what I didn't understand?
Yeah, it would allow, it would allow a parking space in front of the garage. That's correct.
Okay. Okay. And then the other question I had was just, well, two things. One was talking about the twenty to sixty-foot transition zone that you mentioned in the staff, in the report. I couldn't find where that was in the ordinance. I see a, in section two C on page three oh two, it, is that, is that the twenty to sixty feet?
That's correct. So from an intersection with any street or driveway, it's twenty feet. But if you're coming off an arterial like East Katari into a parking lot serving a residential development, we want sixty feet, or the ordinance is currently drafted to require sixty feet between East Katari and the beginning of the Vunif. Basically, to allow more vehicles to stack as they come off of East Katari, and then slow down as they recognize they're pulling into the Vunif.
Okay, that makes sense to me. So it's really an either or. It's like a twenty feet or a sixty feet, not a twenty to sixty feet range.
Correct.
Okay, that makes sense. And then my last question was just, legally, because legally, how would this affect any existing developments? Since it's sort of, you know, it says, multifamily developments shall have this.
So it has no bearing.
Yeah.
It has no bearing on existing developments. They are, they're perfectly fine as they are. We call existing non-conforming or grandfathered.
Okay.
They were, they were approved as they're built, and they're permitted to be built if they were to completely redevelop. Or maybe they're going to significantly change their parking area. We may have the ability to ask for it, but that would, there's. there's what's called legal nexus. So it'd be a case by case basis to be able to look at that.
So if if I'm trying to understand what the minimum thing someone we need to do in order to trigger us looking at asking them to change it, would it be if they were, like you said, renovating their parking, that could that?
Likely not, likely not, because you're allowed to repair what you have and maintain what you have. I'm not going to be able to give you a good answer on that question because it's going to be a combination of our our code with regards to existing non-conforming uses, whether they're proposing expansions, case law, there's a lot that goes into that.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Landman, welcome. I'm glad you were able to make it in.
Thank you, Mr. Mary. Apologies. I had a internet meltdown here. My work iPad absolutely refused despite numerous attempts and the best of my troubleshooting, which means restart, a cold restart to be able to access. And in my neighborhood, on our street, at least in the evening, the DSL usually crawls and you're not able. So bottom line, I managed to get the phone to work. So bear with me. It's a slightly different interface that I'm used to and I'm going like this to read some of it, but I think we'll make it work. So I have two questions for staff. First, I'll state I want to thank staff. I know this was kind of a late breaking addition to this year's workload for them. And I appreciate what I think was really a quick turnaround on something that I fully recognized seemed a very easy concept for us. But when you actually try to flush it out, it gets a whole heck of a lot more complex. So first, the easy question, I want to make sure I actually understand the twenty to sixty foot using because I was thinking was a range based on the speed of the exterior road. Knowing that in a road where people are moving a lot quicker, you want more space for them to recognize the changed condition and as staff suggested staff. So is it's not a range? Are we just offering two different distances and it depends on the size, speed of the road? I just want to make sure I understand that.
That's correct. It's it's not a range. It's twenty feet unless you're coming off of an arterial where it's sixty feet.
Okay, good. Thank you. Yeah, I I'm sorry I missed that, but that makes perfect sense. So I'm going to thank you and council member Sparks for flushing that out for me. So here here the other general thing I noticed looking at this. And this speaks back to the point about it's easy for us to have a general concept, but then when staff has to flush it out, it's harder. We had this general determination that we were requiring requesting all private internal roads that serve face essentially are close to or used by the units, not exterior fire roads. But that it would be a larger portion that would all be vernified, for lack of a better word. Might have invented a new word there, I think. And as I look at this, I can see why in some areas we need double loaded parking. It doesn't make sense to have vernit areas behind that sort of parking because there's it's just not ideal. It's somewhat dangerous. But this still strikes me as somewhat less than I expected. And I looked at the example of the tower apartments in particular, and I noticed it seems like the great bulk of the surrounding internal roadway that serves it is essentially just parking. And there's this one little narrow section that serves some houses in the middle, but not really the rest of them. And then when I went ahead and looked at Riggs Place, that design made sense to me. I can see why that's that makes sense. So that's it hit me is I wonder if staff has any suggestions and anything that would be a middle ground between that basic a hundred square foot per unit. Because as I look at just a limit of essentially ten feet by ten feet per unit as a minimal recommendation. I know that developers won't do any more than that. Once we make that a minimum that they have to do. And it just strikes me, I I didn't expect it. I didn't have time really to really do a lot of research and it seems a little small. So what can you share? Do we have a wider range to work with that that still serves the concerns that staff understandably has with this?
Yeah, I mean, I will say when we presented this to the planning commission, it wasn't it wasn't a magic number, but it so it wasn't formed by kind of the the only applied example we could really go visit and see. I will also say it definitely was influenced by you know, this this whole idea grew as an option to provide more usable open space for multifamily housing. So not to dress up parking areas, but more to create more amenities for residents that may also be able to accommodate some circulation and parking. And so that was the view that staff had. Trying to broaden it out and and really apply it to all circulation areas. It's kind of a we have concerns over the unattended consequences of it and just my lack of experience applying it. You know, but there's just a lot that goes into development. So trying to meet all the underground utility work for meet all the parking standards that we have. All of that and provide this kind of hybrid open space. Staff was concerned with essentially hamstringing future projects from being able to meet all the other numerous issues that we have. And this seemed to provide an expansion on that open space and also meet the direction that the council had of of requiring it and having as a standalone design feature in our multifamily and mixed use housing.
Yeah, I I certainly get this is an addition too. So this is kind of like the cherry on the ice cream sundae, if you will, and fully appreciative and pleased to see that. I wonder, and I see the conundrum that you face. I wonder if having a basic number even works at all. I wonder if a more general description, again, something like we said, internal roadway spaces serving the public that can be best utilized as multimodal pathways. And then using the flexibility that you've built into the end of this ordinance on an issue by issue basis. Now, I recognize that means every single time all our successors for years to come will be fighting back and forth with developers to get the best product they can for the people of Cattati. But in a way, that strikes me as it makes more sense where the opportunity allows, I would love to see us get more usable multimodal open space that can be shared by vehicles, people, bikes, you name it. And in some cases where it is problematic due to geography, terrain, you name it, the size of the development, parking requirements, perhaps it's less and that that might be logical too. Any thoughts on that suggestion?
I think it could work. What we council may want to do is keep the minimum one hundred square feet, but have a kind of a qualifying statement ahead of it that says something as you indicated that says, you know, all circulation aisles able to be multimodal shall seek to incorporate vernif features or be developed as a vernif. And the policy will look to a minimum of a hundred square feet, something along those lines. And I can continue to think about specific language during the discussion. If the council.
I think I personally, if my colleagues agree, would be more comfortable with that. I think it gives us the flexibility because the last thing I want to do is be responsible for inhibiting or slowing down any housing for people. At the same time, I think we all want to make it the best we possibly can. And since we're doing something kind of new in this region with Cattati, we sure want to put our best foot forward. So I'd be supportive of that. It has the negative of it means we'll have to hash it out, but that's why we have staff and city councils in these meetings. So maybe that would be the best way to go. So thank you for that. That was helpful.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Landman. Councilmember Ford.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. And thank you to Noah and staff for bringing this back so quickly after that objective design criteria. So I I am following up pretty much in agreement with Vice Mayor Land and I'm concerned about the potential unintended side effects of that minimum requirement in particular. And and I'm 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 going to say most of my comments for after public comment, but I but my question is whether Director House, whether you can foresee scenarios where that minimum will actually force more space to be devoted to car circulation than our current requirements require. And that's what I want to avoid. Like the the origin of this was to say we want to incur, we want to require internal drive paths to be made multi use as much as possible, like the the phrasing you just described. But now when we put a minimum in there, it feels like we're forcing more internal drive space that cars can go on than perhaps we need to.
Yeah, I I ran some numbers based so at twenty feet wide and three hundred feet long, which three hundred is the maximum length, that would serve at a hundred square feet, that would serve about seventy units. So I and just I was because I was trying to do some math. Okay, like how much land is going to be dedicated to this? So the idea, I I don't think it would push it would push folks to provide more hardscape. I think it's going to push designers to come up with ways to make their hard safe safe and their hardscape safe enough and multimodal because we told them they have to. That makes sense. I don't I don't think it'll motivate more pavement.
Thanks. We can talk about that more after.
Yeah.
I think, yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember Ford. Councilmember Army.
Yes, thank you. I'll be quick. Thank you for all the previous input. It was very interesting. And thanks for the presentation, including the pictures. The pictures kind of kind of help with what it is that that we're looking for. Mine is really just that on page three oh one down in the last paragraph of seventeen point three six point one hundred, we have clam vehicular traffic. I think you wanted to calm it, not clam it.
Thank you.
Okay, so that's it.
Thank you. And I'll bring it back to Councilmember Sparks. Do you have some follow up questions?
Yeah, I I do have one follow up question. Thank you. Just to to Vice Mayor Landman's point that raised a question for me. If if we were to reword the the ordinance to make it a little more open ended, how would that interact with our ministerial process for for by right multifamily?
Yeah, so this does not live in the by right multifamily design objectives.
So if somebody, I understand that. So if somebody came with a by rights project, but the municipal code required this sort of council review of of a vuner of like, but we're not allowed to do that review, like what?
That's correct. It's it's no longer objective.
Okay, so they i- if if we did have just a hundred feet, would that be considered objective and they would have to follow it?
It does. But but I think we may be able to have some language that gets to both.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, since it is an action item, I will open it up for a public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. Looking to our attendees tonight, please use your raise hand icon or dial star nine if you'd like to make a public comment. Neil Hancock, go ahead.
Yes. Thank you very much. I do really like this concept that's been brought out, the vunners. I would point out that it is for this zone private multifamily and it's a the driveways. So it's literally the zone that goes between the road and the parking space. And that was one of the issues for me when I started looking at it. It's a very narrow area. So we have coming off a road. And for East Cattati, the arterial roads is definitely this need for some sort of apron that's in there that's specified. But then there would be this zone, potential zone of a driveway. And then after that, there is the parking space that accesses spaces, the actual parking spaces themselves. So there's and in talking to one woman at one location, she said, well, look, I don't want kids playing behind cars, vehicles. So you know, in the parking areas and the parking access, that's a really, it's not really part of the vuner, I don't think. Now, maybe there's some language in there that could get it to be mixed a little bit. The other area that really came up for me looking at this was that, again, you don't want more hardscape. And looking around at some of the multifamily places, having the green areas, what was fantastic back there. So that's what's really would be nice. But if there's this need due to project design that you actually have to have some driveway, then this is where it should actually be. So I'm I'm sort of recommending on here this deleting the mandatory side of it, the hundred square feet of driveway irrespective of project concept. But even that is perhaps, and I had a little difficulty understanding the code, suddenly realizing this morning was is that there's a minimum distance as well of sixty feet. So if you can't have it for sixty feet, then you can't really mandate the hundred square feet, I think. So anyway, that's the concern. I'd also like to ask at this point staff whether or not the mixed, whether or not the the Lipton Way area that it has an alleyway at the back, the Lombard Lane, whether or not that would be applied to this concept. And similarly for Circle, which is a public street with alleys that are owned, whether or not this concept would apply. So thank you very much. And again, I I really like it. It's just recommending deleting two A and also the way that that apron works on smaller streets. So for the residential streets, which should be less than twenty five miles an hour, does there really need to be more space for vehicles to stack? It should be slower for the vehicles. So thank you very much. I'll look forward to the discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Hancock.
Harris Weaver, go ahead.
Sorry, I started talking before I got unmuted. Reducing the amount of land dedicated solely to motor vehicle use, increasing opportunities for neighbors to interact and creating safety by slowing traffic are all worthy goals that I support, both as a Cattati resident and in my role as executive director of Snoeman County Bicycle Coalition. I, like many advocates, look to the Netherlands as an example of how we can make our communities more bike and pedestrian friendly. I support including design standards for vunners in the city code. However, I'm opposed to the measures requirement for one hundred square feet of vuner per unit for a couple of reasons. Similar to what what both council members Ford and Landman mentioned. First, well, there are other design solutions that can meet some of the same goals. And I do fear that it could end up inadvertently increasing the amount of paving in a project. I'd also noticed when I looked at the examples, the visuals of all of those different examples, only two of them, the one in the Netherlands and the one in Santa Monica, did I actually see people hanging out in it that looked like it was actually being used. Too many of the other American examples were extremely wide and still just looked like glorified parking. But I want to give two examples of of ways of of places that this wouldn't be an improvement. So for example, I'm a founder and resident at Frog Song, the co housing community here. And one of the core principles of co housing is designing to increase social interaction. And one manifestation of that is peripheral parking. So with our homes clustered around large open space, narrow walking paths, all our parking is in one double loaded lot at one edge of the property. Now, a traditional design on that parcel would have had included additional streets. So everyone would park closer to their home and you could have vernifed them. But the way we have designed this property meets many of those other goals. If we had to put another hundred square foot of vernif added on to that, that would have been more pavement. The other thing that I noticed is in one of the examples that you showed, that was a schematic of kind of an L shaped, I forget where it was, where there was the parking garages were all kind of around the edges. And then there was the vernif through the middle. Did there even need to be vehicles on that? That looked like that could have just been a pedestrian pathway and not even allow cars on it. So I'm not sure how that was a benefit since most of the all of the houses and their parking were fairly close to each other. So again, I think the idea of if there's going to be any internal alleys or streets to verify them, to use with the word whoever made up seems like it could be beneficial, but requiring it seems to be blunt of an instrument. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver.
Shanny Bleeker, go ahead.
Hello, are you hearing me?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes, okay, thank you very much. I did submit some comments online this morning, I'm not sure if they made it to you or made it in time, they weren't mentioned earlier. Um, I, I think, um, I agree with all the concerns about mandating anything specifically minimal, um, minimal amounts of asphalt. Um, it seems like it would be better to give the developers a slate of options, um, rather than mandate them to meet certain square foot requirements. Just as, as has been described. Um, I was also wondering why there isn't more mention of using permeable paving. Um, low impact developments such as the concrete squares with holes in them that grass can go through, which would slow down traffic and make it more obvious that it's not. That the design is for people and not for traffic. Um, and the other thing that I was very concerned about was, I hope, I, I love the idea in general of Vunners. But I'm hoping this doesn't in any way take, take away from real safe green spaces. Like children's playing areas, gardens, parks, et cetera, inside developments. I hope these Vunners couldn't be used as an excuse to, to provide less, um, garden space, um, play areas and so on. Um, so generally, I'm sort of in line with what people have been saying already about minimize the asphalt space. And maximize the safety for pedestrians, bicyclists and children. And I'm hoping if you can add into that, um, something about permeable paving where appropriate, um, to help with infiltration and cleaning of, of water. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blaker.
Mayor Moore, that will end public comment.
Thank you, I will bring it back to the council for a further discussion. Uh, Councilmember Ford.
Thank you. Um, so a couple of things to follow up on, on discussion so far. Uh, the, the ordinance, the, the proposed text of the code opens with a clarification that, um, multifamily development and residential forces of horizontal mixed use projects. Which utilize a private driveway internal to the development. So, so the whole code, I believe, only applies to those developments. So we're not talking about developments that don't have an internal driveway. And that was the intent of the council, I believe, when we gave this direction, uh, during the objective design standards was to, to try to specify that internal driveways. Should be designed to be multimodal as much as possible. Um, so I would support removing the hundred square foot requirement. And, um, I think the effect of the ordinance, if we make it clear, if we define internal. Um, internal driveway and say that all such internal driveways have to meet these design standards. Then I think we're closer to something that's workable, um, without contributing to additional hardscape. And so, um, I, I think, for instance, if we think about the tower apartments, you know, the peripheral parking. With a, with a vernor style connector between them is a good model there, we're not trying to. Uh, I forget who, I think it was Vice Mayor Landman who invented the, who verb Vunnerf. So we're not trying to Vunnerf, um, all parking. We're just trying to say if it's internal and close to houses and, um, you know, then, then it should be multimodal. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Sparks.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Ford kind of took the wind out of my sails. I had written down objective definition of internal driveway. Could we, could we require all internal driveways to be Vunners if they met that objective definition, which is basically what Councilmember Ford said? So I hundred percent agree with that and would also be in favor of, of doing that and removing the hundred square feet. And my question first step is, um, i- is that workable as an objective standard? Like, could, could that be considered an objective standard?
There's a lot of, um, things that I, I think have come up just as a part of the recent discussion. So. As was mentioned, you know, it's really, the intent is to separate out the verniff areas from heavy vehicular circulation areas. And so we would want to be able to make that distinction in any definition of internal driveways that's required to be. Vernifed or vernifized, uh, because of the concerns that I think are absolutely valid and we were trying to address with the current language. I have to think about it a little bit more in order to be able to provide a, a good response and, and language that kind of threads all the needles that have, that have been raised, uh, through these discussions. Um, I, I do, I, I do think there's a way to get there without a minimum requirement and I, I understand the concern. I, I will say, um, you know, all pavement is required to. Any, any drop of water that, that lands on an impervious surface is required to be captured and treated before it's ported, put in the storm drain. Under current L I D standards, design standards. Uh, for a long time, permeable pavement was kind of a, one mechanism to do that. Uh, but there's now been a whole stormwater design manual, very, it's become a very, um, clear part of the engineering of, uh, the Bay Area, frankly. So, so the concern is absolutely valid, but it's also addressed through other standards that are already required for all new development. Some of the reason with regards to the traffic and the, like, Mr. Hancock mentioned, you know, a, a child playing behind backing up cars is not acceptable. And so that was some of the direction for the parallel parking or trying to just make distinctions from parking lot drive aisles from Vunners. Um, and so again, I just would want to be thoughtful in how we create these standards. Direct requirements, but then not also have minimums. Um, and then to your point, Councilmember Sparks, how we also can make it an objective requirement. So that way all development is required to do it. Because as you all have heard me say, we are moving closer and closer to all housing becoming by right, or at least all multifamily. Uh, and so we need to have our objective standards be able to address all the concerns that we as a community want, uh, covered.
Thank you.
Councilmember Harvey.
Uh, yes, uh, thank you for that, um. Originally, when we were discussing this, the example that, um, that I had in my mind that we were talking about was in the area of Lipton Way there. And so the concerns about there being more pavement versus less pavement. I thought that the reason that we were moving in this direction was because those alleyways are really just all pavement. And what we were trying to say is this gave the opportunity for those to be used in multiple ways. By taking away some of that pavement. So I'm not sure exactly how we got to more pavement, but I think originally our intent was for it to be more, um, rather than paved alleyways. To be more, um, like some of the examples that were, um, were in the pictures. So, um, that was what I thought we were going for. And I don't know how we got where we're at, but that was, I thought, my intentions was to make it be, look more like. The examples in the pictures of where people were out there, um, in the areas rather than just a stark alleyway, which is what we're getting these days. So that's my two cents.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Landman.
There we go. Yeah, uh, first of all, the first thing I want to get out of the way is to let everyone know immediately after the meeting. I am putting forward a copyright on the term of vernifies, so I want everyone notified not to use that willy nilly because I'm laying claim to that. Uh, moving on, uh, yeah, I think I can understand the concerns I've heard in public comment here. I, I, I think these are concerns that would naturally arise, but had you been present with us in the numerous others discussions that led up to this, I think you'd recognize. This was not, uh, vernus or vernification, hey, another new term, in lieu of outdoor green space or other better amenities. This one's actually based in the council recognizing that developers might use vernus as a less expensive way of meeting the standard providing outdoor amenities. And removing green space. So we actually asked for staff to remove it from the options and just outright require it because it seemed like such a good idea. It turns space that will be hardscape, these are areas that serve traffic routes for people to come park relatively close to their house. So they don't have to walk a block or so to their front door. And it means that it becomes instead of just a driveway, it becomes something that people can use, share, play on. And not that it's just for people or just for rows, for cars, but it's actually something that can be shared in a common sense way. Uh, so, you know, I was originally supportive of a requirement and I still like leaning that way because I just have this feeling, knowing the mechanics of this. That without some sort of requirement, it may not work. On the other hand, as Councilmember Sparks put it, why don't we just require all internal driveways? Well, that certainly gladdened my heart because that was kind of what I pictured when I suggested this concept. Um, I like what. Noah House put forward, I believe if we were to describe this as something as all internal driveways will be vernifized. And of course, you won't use that word because it's copyrighted, but all external driveways will be copyrighted, separate from heavy particular traffic routes and areas. Uh, I would think that would take care of areas that have double loaded parking, which will happen in some larger developments naturally. And hopefully that gives us an objective enough dying stand, design standard. The intention is all of these internal driveways will be multimodal paths, basically vernuff style multimodal paths. With the exception of heavy particular traffic areas. And that gives us the route, given the language at the end of this, uh, ordinance, to be able to discuss this as need be. Uh, project by project, if the project demands it. Uh, so if sta- if staff feels they can do this, I'd be happy to join my colleagues and say I'd be happy to remove the minimum. As long as I'm assured we're getting at least that and hopefully a little more by being able to. Make our intention clear, it's all internal driveways, but that we have the flexibility to remove as necessary for infrastructure and heavy particular traffic areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Landman, uh, Councilmember Ford.
Thanks, um, one smaller thing I didn't mention earlier, I think the parking language is currently somewhat contradictory within itself. So three, three point one talks about, um, standards for both parallel and non parallel parking. And then three point four starts off with parking within the vernor should be parallel spaces, but then continues to describe some possibilities for non, non parallel. Um, so I think that just needs a little cleanup, that's a minor point. Um, and I would support the direction that, that Vice Mayor Landman and, um, other council members have, have been leaning. Which is that we ask staff to come up with a clear definition of internal driveway or alleyway. Whatever that right category of ways that, that should become Vunnerf, Vunners. And, uh, and ask that it come back without the hundred, hundred square foot minimum, but with a requirement that are all such. With, with whatever the appropriate exception for heavy vehi- vehicular traffic is.
Thank you, Councilmember Ford. Vice Mayor Landman, did you have additional comment or still have your hand up?
Apologies, getting used to the phone interface, let me make that hand go away.
So I have a concern if we eliminate the minimum on square feet. Because if we eliminate that, I think that, um. It, it just puts too much, um, decision making in the hands of the developer. And, and I, I don't see where allowing them that much more, um, to, to misinterpret. So I, I have a concern with that. I don't know if anybody wants to, um, take a stab at that or, or. Councilmember Sparks?
Just a, a question for you, Mayor Moore, um, it, in my mind, replacing the hundred square foot minimum with a requirement that all internal driveways be Vunners. Sort of increases the requirement rather than decreasing it. Um, but it sounds like you don't see it that way. Um, because, because I'm picturing it as they could build a internal driveway with the hundred square foot minimum, where only part of it's a Vunnerf. Because that meets their minimum and the rest of it isn't. Um, you see what I'm saying?
I do. Well, thank you, um, Councilmember Ford.
Well, I, I also wanted to respond to that concern, um, and make sure that whatever we end up with doesn't imply that. Every multifamily development has to have an internal vernor. As Ms. Weaver said in public comment, right, there's plenty of other ways to create good, um, person friendly space and peripheral. You know, keeping the cars out of the space is even preferable to me to creating a vernor, so.
Thank you. Uh, Vice Mayor Landman.
Yeah, I, I certainly hear your concerns, Mayor Moore, uh, I think I kind of shared them earlier, uh, and I think they're valid ones. Uh, but I, I do tend to agree, I, I think. That laying out there, we're not just saying a hundred feet, we're saying all internal driveways is an increase. What the caveat is here, which you, which is clear to you and it's clear to me, and I'm sure it's clear to all of us, is it does open the door, of course, to some back and forth. Between staff, planning, commissioners, uh, council members and developers. When these developments come through, uh, and it'll be the age old fight we always have with developers understandably, trying to minimize their costs. And the city understandably trying to maximize the best, best result for its residents. Um, but I think that that's, we have a chance of getting more in that way. Uh, because if I know developers too, yes, to, I, I forget if it was Councilmember Sparks or Ford that suggested this. But I could see if we require a hundred feet and they had a hundred and fifty foot space, they might just do a hundred feet because that's the only requirement. This way, we're saying all of it, um, I would ask staff if they see any areas where. We might lose in this because, uh, Mr. House certainly has a deeper expertise in. Working in these larger plans and dealing with developers, but just from my own assessment, it, it's like, it seems like we might get more this way. So that's the best counsel or advice I can give you, um. Who knows, but I'm confident if you look back the years we've all shared together in working with our developers and the give and take. We've generally all done pretty well, the developers have done good projects, they've given a little more maybe they wanted to, but most of them didn't go away unhappy. And, uh, it seems to have worked and I'm confident that could work for future council members too. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. House, do you have more than enough information?
Yeah, uh, I, it's interesting because I, I definitely recognize that, um, the direction of the ordinance grew out of staff's original intent. To have it serve as an alternative form of open space. And so where, what I'm kind of hearing from the council and the community is that we should just seek to create as much multimodal circulation. As we can in all of these developments. And so, um. I, I, I want to take the ordinance back to the drawing board a little bit and what comes back may not be a Vunnerf ordinance per se. Because the, if you look at the intent of a Vunnerf, it, it literally is a defined space. That has its own kind of intended use within the broader development. And what the council and community may want is just more multimodal direction throughout our developments. And that, that's kind of what I'm hearing from the council, so if you just give me a little bit of feedback on that, then that'll help me. Redraft the ordinance in the appropriate direction.
Okay, um, Councilmember Harvey.
I, I think Noah has it because I think that that's really what we're, what we're trying, trying to do is if there's more ways. To have multimodal space rather than these pavement alleys. I think that that's really our, our intention is, is to do it differently. And I think we saw these warnups as, as a possibility for that, but maybe Noah's right, maybe that's not the best way to get that multimodal. In, inside the, um, alleyways of these, uh, developments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ford.
I'm not sure I quite agree with that framing. I think that, um, my goal is that if there are going to be cars in the midst of a development, then that space should be multimodal. But cars at the periphery is to me still preferable to that. So I don't want to, for instance, if you redesign tower apartments to try to create more multimodal space, then you're spacing those cars out a lot more and creating more hardscape. I don't want to do, I'm not advocating for that. I'm saying if the, so, so that's, and I think this was the origin of, from the original multifamily design standards is if there's driveways that are kind of meandering among homes, then those should be usable for other purposes than cars, but not just to general create more multimodal space. I'm, I'm all for keeping cars out of the space that I want to use most of the time.
Thank you, Councilmember Sparks.
I, I would tend to agree with that. I really do like the verniffs and I like all the elements of, of them. So I would hate to see this not, and I, and I like mispronouncing it differently every time. So I would hate to see this not come back as a verniff, uh, ordinance. But I, I agree that it would be fine with me if a development doesn't have any internal driveway, if the cars are at the periphery, but if there is going to be driving, I, I'd like a developer to look at this ordinance and say, okay, if we're going to cut up the property with driveways, they're going to have to be verniffs. And, um, maybe that could encourage them to make more usable open space instead and not cut up, cut up the development. But if they are going to need to have a driveway through there, then it's going to be multimodal. That's kind of the direction I would like to see it go.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Lemon?
Yeah, I think Councilmember Ford, uh, defined what we're looking for, at least what I know, think I'm looking for and share this concerns perfectly. They would be the ones I share. Using multimodal as a term to describe something that is shared equally by all modes of transportation, pedestrians, and as well as just residential recreation use. And perhaps that's not the right definition. I certainly would want to greatly expand the hardscape to add more paths, bike paths, this and that, and, and make it longer and push cars farther out. The intention was for the internal circulation driveway, support these, these homes, that that's hardscape replaced with something, uh, that is more usable for all those uses I just defined. So I'm fine if the definition that comes back of multimodal encompasses all the features of verniffs, uh, in proximity of the living areas and, and access areas for the living spaces and recreation spaces. I could certainly live with that. But I, I, I do, I, I think we've been pretty clear. I, I know that staff's going to have to go back and see what they can come up with, but I, I think it's pretty clear what we're looking for. It's understood that some roads in these internal roadways might be farther away from the, uh, in interior green space, from the access to the homes. These may not be areas that people are going to naturally gather, congregate or recreating. We talked about this with some of the fire roads that exist around some of our apartments out of Alvaro. They're areas that kids might not even play in quite as often. So if, if there's something that better defines the proximity of verniff features, I'd be open to that. But I think I agree with Mr. Ford. I want to stick to that concept of we're looking for vernification. And that may be mostly because I don't want to have to invent a new word. I'm not sure how multimodalization doesn't roll off the tongue quite as sweet as vernus, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Harvey?
I, yes, I think Councilmember Ford misunderstood what, where I was headed with that. I, I am in agreement. I don't want any more, um, hardscape out there and there are multiple ways to do this. And certainly as the example that was put out there with, with Frog Song and how they have all of the pathways on the inside and the parking on the outside, that's perfectly fine. I think where we were discussing were things more like, um, where there were alleyways. So I think we're in, in agreement. I was not asking for more, um, more roads and driveways just for the sake of having them be multimodal.
Yeah, and I was responding to, to Director House's framing, not yours, sorry.
That's okay. I, I think we're, we're in, we're in agreement on, on where we're at.
Okay. Does that flip that coin around for you, Mr. House? I think the understanding is if we have to have an internal driveway, it would be multimodal.
Understood. I, yes, I will, um, you all can tell me when I bring back the ordinance, how well I, how well I threaded the needle. But I, I do, I have a lot to go with. Uh, I understand the direction. The struggle I, that I'm having is, is how to create these vern, how to vernifies certain portions of a development, recognize the needs that other areas are going to have and the safety issues, and then also to your point, not push more hardscape. But I'm up to the challenge.
Okay. It'll be interesting when you come back. Thank you so much for your patience in dealing with that, because as you know, everyone has an opinion. Thank you. So the council's okay with that going back to, uh, community development? Okay. Thank you so much. Now we will move on to... We are at... Introduction of an Ordinance to Implement SB 1383 Organics and Green Waste Requirements. On this particular, uh, public hearing, I am going to recuse myself as we have a potential amendment to our, um, contract agreement with our hauler.
Oh, Mayor, sorry to interrupt you. The city attorney can weigh in, but I think this one, because it's just a general ordinance, you wouldn't have to recuse yourself from. The franchise agreement, when that does come back, would be certainly one you, I think, have to recuse yourself from.
Okay. Do you or your spouse work for the company? Is that what?
Correct. My spouse works for Recology, the hauler.
Yeah, I, I don't know that there's anything about this ordinance that will have direct impacts on, on the contract or the hauler. But when the, when the contract amendment does come back, you should definitely recuse from that. If you wanted out of an abundance of caution to recuse from, from this item as well, that would be, that would be acceptable.
Well, traditionally, I'm not known for an abundance of caution, but in this particular situation, I will recuse myself so that I will not ever have to hear anything about that. So, um, I will have a short bit take over from there. I will mute myself and, um, take out myself off video, but I will be also still listening to continue after that item.
All right. Thank, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
So, uh, Vice Mayor Landman will be chairing this item, right? All right, so SB 1383, we've talked a little bit about this, um, already. We talked about the MOU with Zero Waste Sonoma at our last meeting, which was one of the components. And, um, uh, just as, just a quick background, SB 1383 was, um, signed by the governor back in 2016 and it was, um, more broadly, the short-lived climate pollutants law. And with respect to solid waste, its intent was to limit or, well, really just to limit the, um, greenhouse gas emissions from landfills by diverting organic waste out of landfills into reuse. So organic waste, I mean, I think everyone knows this, but it's things such as food scraps, yard waste, compostable, um, products, um, and then food soiled, paper, lumber, um, fiber based textiles, that sort of thing. And then, um, as I mentioned, the council has already seen the MOU as Zero Waste Sonoma. They would be performing the role of doing a lot of the education and, um, some of the secondary contact with customers that are non-compliant. Recology or franchise hauler would be the primary point of contact for customers that are, um, and for education and for customers that are non-compliant, um, which would then be triaged with Zero Waste Sonoma. And then, of course, the city, um, would be involved in those conversations. And ultimately if, um, uh, ultimately if there was some enforcement needed, then the city would perform that role, which was the, um, the MOU that we talked about. And one thing, um, just on that MOU, um, just as a point of clarification, I did have follow-up conversations with Zero Waste Sonoma about the, um, about the compost team program and the composting requirements. And, um, they did clarify some of the questions that the council, um, and I had at the last meeting, which is the, um, the rebate program that they're, um, uh, that they're piloting coming up would be, um, countywide. So in other words, the, um, the farm or whoever's receiving the compost rebate wouldn't have to be in Cattati, it could be anywhere in the county. And, um, those credits would get applied proportionally to all the cities in the county, essentially filling everyone's credit bucket at the same time. And everyone would hit a hundred percent credit at the same time. Ultimately, we're still responsible for meeting that requirement individually, but, um, the thinking is, and the, well, certainly the hope is with the program that the credits would be adequate to, um, to cover everyone's SB 1383 requirements. So, um, in addition to the MOU, the ordinance tonight is, um, is part of it. As we talked about at the outset, the franchise agreement amendment for 1383 is also going to be part of this that you have not seen yet. And then, um, the green procurement policy is another thing that we're working on right now. So after the ordinance, you still can expect to see the franchise agreement amendment and the, um, uh, the green procurement policy coming back to council for, for conversation and, um, eventual adoption of those changes. And, um, another, so the ordinance that you see before you tonight is essentially the same ordinance that, um, that was provided at the last meeting in draft form. Um, we did clarify one element of it, which is making it clear in the heading that, um, that this doesn't just apply to commercial, it also applies to multifamily residential dwellings. And so that, um, some language is added there just to try to clarify that, just both in terms of the table contents, but also in the, in the chat or the section headings. And, um, there were also some, um, some clarifications on the self-hauler requirements. So currently our ordinance allows residential to self-haul and not commercial. So that was, um, we made some edits to that just to make it consistent with our existing solid waste ordinance. And, um, that's essentially the, um, the changes that were made from the draft that were, that was provided before. But I would, I would be happy to, to go through any questions or if anyone has any comments on, on the draft. I, I will say that, um, this was based on the state model, so it's, it basically follows the model ordinance that the state wrote, um, but just tailored for our specific situation. So the model ordinance has different options based on your local sort of solid waste situation, both in terms of haulers and, and how you dispose of waste in your counties. So it's, it was just the model ordinance as the basis tailored for essentially how we operate and to fit into our ordinances, our existing ordinances. So, um, I'll just, uh, pause there and, um, I'd be happy to take any questions.
We'll bring it back to the council. Thank you, Mr. Obit. I'll ask the council if you could raise your virtual hands for me if you have any questions. And I ask for your forbearance because I'm going to have to look at a list on this phone because I can't see all your faces at once. So please go ahead and raise your hands if you'd like to ask questions. Okay, let's see. I'm seeing Councilmember Harvey, you have your hand raised? Please go ahead.
Yes, thanks, Vice Mayor. Uh, Damian, you may or may not know this. My recollection is that for the food recovery, um, there are requirements by the state that we recover certain percentages. And my recollection is that we don't yet know exactly, um, what that landscape fully looks like. Is that your understanding also?
Well, so, um, Zero Waste Sonoma has been inventorying the...
Right.
Yeah, the commercial edible food generators, the tier ones and tier twos. And, um, they have at least a preliminary list, and I know, um, I, I know that they have an initial list with Cattati. We haven't started working with them yet on that, but, um...
Okay. And we're, I mean, the generators is one thing, but the actual, um, groups that actually take that and turn that around, I, I don't know that we have a really good handle around the folks that, that take it, um, from the generators. Is that your understanding also?
That's my understanding. I mean, there, there's some that are obvious, like Redwood Empire Food Bank and that kind of thing, but there's, I think there's others too, that there's still, Zero Waste Sonoma is still trying to work, work out who's, who can distribute basically, you know?
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
I think you, Councilmember Harvey, uh, Councilmember Sparks, I see your hand. Please go ahead.
Thank you. So my question, Damian, is back to this, um, commercial business and multifamily dwelling portion. Uh, thank you for changing the heading. That, that looks a lot clearer now. Just a real, one real quick question and then a longer question. The quick question is, um, it says generators that are, I'm on packet page 331, right at the bottom, generators that are commercial businesses, including multifamily residential dwellings. Would it be more clear to just say generators that are commercial businesses or multifamily residential dwellings? That was just a quick question. And then, um, the bigger question is, I do, just to make sure I'm understanding this correctly, it looks like in this section, multifamily residential dwellings are required to place green waste in the green bin, but they're not required to put the green bins out where the residents take their trash to. I'm wondering if I'm understanding that correctly, because I, I have this feeling that if that bin is not placed, if it doesn't have to be placed out there, I don't know how the residents are going to actually put the green waste in the right place. So I'm, I'm just trying to understand how that's going to work and really hold the multifamily, uh, developments accountable to, to do this.
So on your first, on the first comment about the way, the language, um, generators that are commercial businesses, including multifamily residential dwellings, um, I mean, unless, uh, unless Mr. Barker has some input on it, I think, I mean, doesn't, I don't think that's a big deal to change it and, you know, commercial businesses and multifamily, because that's how it applies, except as it's, as they're accepted in the subsequent sections, you know? Um, and then with regard to multifamily, so the, I mean, the language generally, I think tries to, um, uh, tries to recognize that, that there's, that some multifamily developments just don't have the same space. Cause a lot of them have debris bins and they may not accommodate all three containers or there's some allowance for that. And I think that's what the language is trying to accomplish. I, which, which section specifically, specifically were you referencing on 332, packet page 332?
I was referencing the, um, section D where it says multifamily, at the bottom of section D, multifamily dwellings are not required to comply with container placement requirements. And there, and section E at the top, excluding multifamily residential dwellings, so they're not required to have the green waste containers everywhere where the other containers are. And it was my understanding, maybe I'm, I need to look back through and find where this is, but it was my understanding there was a, a process to grant an exemption for, for people who specifically don't have room, um, for dwellings that don't have room for these containers. But it, and, and I'm fine with that, but it, it seems like we're just granting a blanket exemption to everyone, regardless of whether they have room or not, um, with this section.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Councilmember. If I recall correctly, that, that exemption that you're referencing is actually set out in the, uh, state's, uh, SB 1383 regulation. So what, what this provision in the ordinance is doing is restating, um, an exemption that's already in state law?
an exemption that's already in state law. And I think the container replacement requirements reflect some of the constraints that exist for for multifamily that are different from a regular commercial building. But I can look it up while we're while we're while you continue with your deliberations.
So it sounds like we might not have any any leeway there if we're just aligning it with the state.
That's what I believe. I'm going to double check.
The 14 CCR section referenced, 18984.9B. I found that the, I found as I was going through this, the model ordinance does just repeat a lot of the state statute language. For I guess for convenience, rather than just referencing the state statute, it actually repeats it here in the model ordinance.
Okay. If we could find that out for sure, whether we have any any leeway there, that would be really helpful.
Yeah.
All right. So while we're waiting for Mr. Barker to feverishly look through the internet, we will let Mr. Ford go ahead with his questions.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. So on that particular issue of multifamily and the exemption, that the that exemption is specifically only sections E and F that multifamily are excluded from, not from section D. So section D says that all, including multifamily, have to supply and allow access to adequate number size of location of collection containers with sufficient labels and colors. So that last sentence in section D convinces things by being in section D. I think it shouldn't be in section D. It should just be set apart. It's not actually part of the the requirement that's in section D. It says multifamily are not required to comply with the requirements in sections E and F or below. So I might just give away to make that, you know, a set aside or just remove that sentence. And because section E already has it excluding multifamily, we could add that to section F as well and then take that last sentence out of D because many people will read it, as I did last time, as just exempting multifamily from all the placement requirements. But section says they have to supply the containers.
Yeah, after rereading that, I agree that last sentence of subsection D could be stricken and it would create far less confusion.
Provided we added something to F, I would assume, right, to I mean, it's not going to change the state statute, but it would at least be easy to reference.
Yeah, this this language is designed to exempt out. So so businesses are subject to requirements to to make available three bins, any location where they where they put out bins for customers to get rid of trash. So they have to put out three bins. But multi, including in, you know, areas for customers and then also any common areas that a business has. But multifamily is exempt from those two requirements. So that that's what this language is trying to say. If you look at F, it only applies to commercial businesses and businesses and elsewhere in the ordinance. It distinguishes between multifamily residential and businesses. So I think one could read subsection F not to apply to multifamily, but it's not as clear as it could be.
I wonder if it might be wise, since we've had our questions and it's about time to open this to the public, we could give our city attorney, Mr. Barker, a few minutes to review this, perhaps see if he has any verbiage that sounds good. And then we can revisit it when we come back for our deliberations. If that's workable, I will go ahead.
Vice Mayor, can I? Yes, please. Can I ask one more small question? I forgot was, do we really have to repeat exactly the same language and oh, wait, and 20 or whatever those two sections are at the beginning where we have 8.22 and 8.08? We have exactly the same text. Seems odd to just have our code be peppered with repeating.
Sorry, Councilmember Ford, which?
So on packet pages 317 and 318, we just insert the same definition in both 8.08 and 8.22. And that's fine, you know, sometimes you repeat definitions. But then the exceptions disposal permitted section, I'm just curious about the code that's constructed that has to repeat the same text twice.
So one is about for chapters 8.08 and then chapter 8.22, that there's the two paragraphs there. That's one about animal, organic waste fed to animals. And then the other one's organic waste used in onsite composting.
Right. Not a big deal. It's just, it means if we ever have to change it, we have to change it in two places. It doesn't make sense to me to have the same text in multiple places, but maybe it's necessary in this case.
Yeah, I mean, I I read it as one, you know, one paragraph applying to. Well, just to clarify, are you talking about the definitions or the exceptions paragraphs?
Well, probably the exception. I mean, I can definitions being repeated in multiple chapters, that makes more sense to me.
Yeah.
It's not a big deal. So we can, we can leave it. I don't know the code structure well enough to understand how 8.08 and 8.22 interact, so.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be possible to, you know, in 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 one of the two, in like 8.08, have the full organic waste definition in 8.22. We could just say organic waste and point back to the definition 8.08.
Yeah. Yeah. We can leave it. Okay.
Certainly see the difficulty. You see language that's perhaps overly verbose and difficult to parse. And yet then we try to improve it, sometimes we just come up with something else that's difficult in in a different way. Not like that, who knows what might get the governor angry at us too. So perhaps that's best left unsaid. With that, I'm going to ask our city clerk, Burgess, if we can see if we have any public comment on this particular agenda item.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Landman. Looking to our public, correction, to our attendees tonight, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use your raised hand icon. Vice Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
Thank you very much. All right, bringing this back to the council then. So we have before this the introduction of an ordinance. I'd like to see if there's any further discussion. If not, I'd be open to a motion.
Move to approve.
All right, we have somebody moving the introduction of the ordinance. Do we have a second for this?
Mr. Mayor, before you, before you, I guess, accept the second, I wonder if I might offer the proposed changes that was suggested earlier.
My apologies, Mr. Barker. Yes, please, let's go ahead and add those additions.
Okay, so this is on page, let's see, packet page 332. The suggestion was that there was some confusion language in subsection D, the last sentence. So my suggestion would be to combine subsections E and F into a single paragraph and strike out the reference to 8.10.040F in subdivision D. And then combine all that below the E and F into a single paragraph. And with that, I think it makes it clear that that particular paragraph E only applies to commercial businesses other than multifamily residential dwellings.
All right, I will ask the council, anybody, don't bother to raise your hand. If you have any questions, feel free to raise them, Mr. Barker. Or if not, let me know if this sounds acceptable.
I do have a question, Mr. Acting Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Miss Sparks, go ahead.
For section, at the very top of section D, it it says in parentheses, conforming with section 8.10.040F below, which if we're combining E and F would be, I guess, conforming with section E below. What I want to understand and what's concerning me is that if this is referencing and saying you're only obligated to supply and allow access to bins conforming with section E, and then E says right at the start, excluding residential dwellings, then excluding multifamily residential dwellings, then does that does that undercut what Councilmember Ford was saying earlier about section D applying to multifamily? Just want to understand that. Does that question make sense?
Yes, it does. It undermines what I was trying to do. Well, your your comment doesn't, but the the sentence, the first sentence of subdivision D applies more broadly. I don't have an immediate solution. I mean, we're trying to resolve an ambiguity on the fly here that's not very easy to resolve. And I mean, ultimately, everything makes sense the way it was worded originally. It just takes a, it takes quite a long time to to sort through everything. So it might be simpler to just leave it alone. And because, because, you know, I just tried to make that edit on the fly. I think it made it more confusing.
So if I were, if I can just clarify this, Mr. Barker, what we're saying is this is difficult language to parse. And at first glance, it may suggest something problematic in response in regard to placement of the green waste bins. But once somebody takes the time to work through this, there's clarity there. Is that your perception? And is that the general perception of the people that raised this concern now after having a chance to discuss this? Is it satisfactory to leave the original language, even though admittedly, it's not ideal? I would hate to see us create more problems by trying to adjust multiple things or even worse, put this off for something, unless we absolutely needed to. So I'd like to hear from you, Mr. Barker, and the rest of the council, what's your direction on this?
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't disagree with you, what you said. That is exactly what my perspective that I was attempting to articulate.
I just wanted, I wanted to hear from a legal professional in agreement that our concerns are addressed in here, even if it's not done with ideal clarity. Let me ask the rest of the council if if this is workable for you or acceptable for you.
Well, so as one of the ones who misread it, misread that paragraph multiple times, I still have problems with the last sentence of paragraph D because coming in, it doesn't make sense for that sentence to be in paragraph D. That plain reading of paragraph D, you would get to that sentence and think, oh, this doesn't apply to me if you're, if you're trying to deal with multifamily. And so I don't know if that sentence could be moved to paragraph E instead of paragraph F. Like, why not put it in the paragraph that it actually applies to?
Were they talking about something like that? Residential dwelling trial.
Well, right, I mean, it would, so you would combine that last sentence in D and the first sentence in E into something that makes sense. And take it out of paragraph D, which does apply to to multifamily. There's still that issue of the parenthetical thing in the first sentence that references paragraph F that doesn't apply to multifamily. So that's, that is an issue as well. But I think getting that last sentence out of D would help.
All right, I'm going to ask other councilmembers if that, if there are any other other concerns behind, beyond that. And if there aren't any other concerns beyond that, I'd suggest, I will ask rather, Mr. Barker, there's two directions we could go with. Perhaps we could combine them. We could direct pass this or introduce this motion and direct staff to make that change. And if for some reason they find that untenable or unworkable, again, this is a big game of Jenga where you pull one stick and things fall apart all over the place, then perhaps we can live with the original wordage. Does that sound acceptable? Let me ask Mr. Barker first if he thinks he can make that one change without creating a host of new issues.
I I do think that. I think you can move that last sentence of subparagraph D down to E and sort of reconcile it and it work.
All right, we have progress. So let me go by the council one more time. Any other concerns before we move forward with this? Please feel free just to speak up.
I request that that be included in my motion.
All right, so we're going to amend the motion to include that. I'm not hearing anything else. So now
A second, Council.
So we have a second from Mr. Ford. All right, so all in favor, please, all, we need a roll call vote, please. City Clerk Burgess.
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks.
Yes.
Councilmember Ford.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Landman.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much, everybody. We've worked through that. This means we can bring the real mayor back in as we move forward to our next item, which I believe is item 11B. And this is the ever popular, popular annual financial reporter, the Paffler. So welcome back, Captain Mayor Moore.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Landman. You're doing an admirable job up until the very end there because I believe we're on 11A.
But I really like the Paffler a lot, but
And especially, especially you're trying to run a meeting from a phone. I think you did a terrific job. Thank you so much.
It has its challenges.
It does. It does. So I believe the approval, regular ten item 11A, the approval of the city's local road safety plan would fall into the wheelhouse of Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Craig Scott, Public Works Director, City Engineer. This item tonight is to request council approve the local road safety plan. The plan is a tool to help city staff in efficiently focusing education, enforcement, engineering, and emergency response resources towards addressing the highest priority areas with the most collision rates. Having an approved plan makes the city eligible for federal funding under the Federal Highway Administration's Highway Safety Improvement Program or H SIP. In early 2021, staff applied for and was awarded a grant to prepare the plan. The plan, the city jointly prepared the request for proposals with other local jurisdictions, Windsor, Santa Rosa, Ronert Park, to name a few. And the group, we went ahead and selected GHD consulting engineers to help prepare the individual plans. So we we combine the effort to do a coordinated proposal, but the grant requirements requires us to each do individual plans. At this time, I'd like to go ahead and introduce, if you can move to the next slide, please, Jake Hudson from GHD, and he's here to present the plan. But before I do that, I'd like to go ahead and talk about the public process that we used. And so I'll be describing the partnerships and stakeholders involved in the plan preparation and the public engagement process. For most of this year, the stakeholder group met on a regular basis to develop the plan. Each group brought forward their unique perspective. For example, Ryan Rinkie from the city's police department provided firsthand accounts of where the incidents were occurring and the likely causes. Caltrans provided input on statewide trends and how the city can best loop into state funding programs. This is a very dedicated group. Like I said, they're meeting every other week for four or five months, and their input is greatly appreciated. A very important part of the process is engage engaging the public. The city hosted a website dedicated to the plan and conducted a public workshop. The city got word out through social media announcements and its website to direct Katati citizens to the plan's dedicated website. The website described the purpose of the plan, upcoming workshops, held documents, and most importantly, provided a means for the city to provide input. The public could take a survey, write a comment, and place a pinpoint, a mark on the map with a comment on what those issues were at that location. And they did. The city received a total of 130 comments, 33 survey responses as well. And those responses are included verbatim in appendix A of the report. The the workshop, which was held in June, was held virtually and was interactive, enabling participants to write their questions in the chat box or raise their hand and we could unmute them and they would be able to ask their question to us. Each of these questions were addressed during the workshop. Each of these questions were addressed during the workshop by city staff. And so the comments, the collective of these comments did have, were used to influence the report and the outcome of the plan. So at this time, I'd go ahead and then please advance a couple of slides. I'd like to go ahead and hand the presentation over to Jake Hudson from GHD, who will be presenting the plan.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Thanks, Craig. Can we advance to slide one, one more? So, you know, as Craig was saying, this is a very collaborative process that we worked with the city's partner agencies and with the public. What you're seeing in front of you right now is essentially the outcome of the public engagement process, which I would say for the city has been one of the more productive public engagement campaigns that we've run for these local roadway safety campaigns. And what you're seeing is really interesting because as we move forward with the presentation, the pub, the public sentiment over the types of issues, safety issues that the city is experiencing, traffic safety, very closely coincides with the actual data that's coming back. So for example, you see here speeding is, is one of the, one of the highest primary concerns amongst people that responded to the survey, and that just happens to be one of the highest causes of collisions within the city. So I thought it'd be interesting to point that out and sort of highlight what, what Craig was saying about how, how collaborative and how much public outreach went in, went into this process. So we get advanced aside, please.
Hey, Jake.
Yeah.
I just want to insert one more thing.
Sure.
We did receive written comments from four members of the public after this item was published for, for council and we'll, we'll try to address those comments during the presentation. And at the very end, I'll, I'll, I'll try to make a summary of just directed towards those comments. Thanks.
Excellent. Thanks. Thanks, Craig. So
again, just to recap, what, what this document is, is it's a framework and procedures document that the, that the, is now becoming a requirement for most federal funding. Highway Safety Improvement Program funding, which is one of the largest federal funding sources. And there's a set of criteria and organization of how these documents are supposed to be developed and presented so that the city is eligible for that funding. And the first part of that is where we, we develop sort of a vision and goal for what what the successful implementation of this plan would be in the futures of vision and goals. And an industry term that's often used, some may be familiar with it, is Vision Zero. And that's essentially what we're recommending for the city. And what that is, is essentially a goal and a vision of striving to eliminate all traffic fatalities and severe injuries throughout, throughout the city. And the means for achieving that are a proactive systematic approach that also incorporates human behavior and human failures in, into, into the analysis of what we're doing. So if we could advance a slide, so that's the recommendation is adopting, the city adopting a Vision Zero policy. So the next part, the second part of developing this document is assessing where the city has been up until recently. So essentially looking at the collision trends that have happened thus far. And we evaluated 2015 through 2019. The reason we stopped at 2019, we actually had more current data is that 2020 pandemic hit and, and collisions were actually significantly less, but also traffic volumes significantly less. And there was just, it was not a good year to make an assessment of trending, of trends. So if you advance the slide. So what we found is that from 2015 through 2019, there was a very slight upward trend. And I would caveat that with, in the city of Katati, the the amount of traffic collisions due to the relatively small size are relatively small. So just a couple of additional traffic collisions would make, would make statistics appear, you know, that there would be drastic increases in the number percentage of volumes, number percentage of traffic collisions. So although there, although we did see an increase in traffic collisions over the course of the last four years, I would say the number of collisions themselves is actually relatively low, only 10, 10 more collisions in 2019 than it was in 2018. And even there was a dip there. So it goes back and forth. So I think more realistically, I, I'd be more confident as calling this a relatively static collision trend, possibly with, and, and, you know, just slightly trending upward. What it's also important to understand about traffic collisions is the economic impact that it has on the community, not necessarily the city, not necessarily costs to the city, but the economic impact on businesses, on, on your citizens and just overall, and looking at using insurance data and we call it ASJO, but you know, national databases on overall costs. We found is that in 2019, there was about a $3 million impact on, on the city's economy as a result of traffic collisions. And so that sort of puts, puts things into perspective on how important it is to have a proactive approach to addressing traffic collisions and investing in projects and programs and, and programmatic activities to address those. So if we could advance the slide, please. So the next thing that we looked at, we started to look at where are the collision concentrations? What we found is that they were primarily within the downtown corridor. And then that also extended out along East Katati. We found collision concentrations along Old Redwood and 116 Joseph Way right in that area. And then we also found sort of a third collision concentration along Route 116 and West Katati Avenue. And then within those concentrations, what we do is we look at what is the most predominant type of collision that's happening? And what's the most predominant type of thing that's leading up to those collisions? So that's the chart in the bottom right. And what we found is that rear end collisions are the most common type of, type of collision and speeding is the most common factor leading up to those. What we also found secondarily to rear ends were broadside collisions. And these were, you know, almost a quarter of the collisions occurring within the city. We found that those were predominantly related to motorists, pedestrians and cyclists, primarily motorists, not obeying traffic control. So running red lights, not running stop signs, not yielding the right of way and, and other things like that. And then as sort of a third, third tier of what's happening within the cities, we found a pretty significant volume of collisions or pretty significant amount of collisions that were related to impaired driving. So hitting objects or side swiping or other, other collisions that, that were related to either alcohol impairment or some other form of drug impairment. Next slide, please. So beyond just looking at overall collision patterns, we also tried to isolate some of the specific travel modes, some of the, what we call the more at risk or more vulnerable modes. And so what you're looking at here are the collision concentrations and the overall trends of the last several years for pedestrians. And what's interesting here is that this actually is following the overall citywide collision pattern primarily with the primary concentration in the downtown area. Not a lot of surprise, that's where most of the pedestrian activity is, but also sort of spreading out further up Old Redwood Highway and then also along East Katati as well. And then overall, I would say pedestrian collisions have been static from 2015 with a couple, actually, let me move something on the screen, let me move that with a spike in 2017 and a spike in 2019. And then again, you know, like I said before, we're not presenting 2020 data because we don't feel that's a representative pattern with, with the pandemic, but 2019, those, those came, there, there was, I think there was maybe one pedestrian collision in 2021 or two. So if we could go on to the next slide as well. And then so moving from pedestrians, now we're looking at bicycle trends. What we found with unlike pedestrian trends that followed sort of the overall cycling collision trends were predominantly along East Katati Avenue. And then really, really focused in on East Katati and Charles Street. That crossing there as the primary location. What we saw through 20, from 2015 through 2017, collisions started to rise. Again, we're talking about very low numbers here, one, two, three collisions per year. And then since 2017, you know, one, you know, approximately one collision a year for, for the bicycle trends and concentrations. Next slide. So then we look at, you know, in addition to what type of, what's, you know, what type of collision pattern is happening? What's happening at the individual locations? We also look at what are the contributing factors for those collision citywide? So what's, what's the most common things that are happening across city regardless of location? And as we talked about earlier, the number one collision factor is speeding within the, within the city, primarily leading to rear ends and also right of way violations. Making it difficult for drivers to judge gaps in traffic to enter into roadways. As a secondary thing, what we also found is that, and it's actually a combination of a, a couple of these bar charts in here, is that it's not obeying traffic control devices was the secondary one. That's running red lights, running stop signs and that, you know, ultimately resulting in a collision. And then DUIs again being the third, the third most prominent thing that's leading to collisions. Next slide. So what we've done is we've taken all of this information, we've looked at all the collision patterns and trends, we've looked at specific locations. We've looked at everything citywide. And what this plan includes are recommendations from two different types, you have two different aspects. So there, what you're seeing before you right now is what's called emphasis areas. So these are recommendations, and this is just a summary. There's a lot more actually in our report. But this is a summary of the recommendations for citywide collision trends. This is not recommendations for any specific locations. So what we found is that, well, what we're, the program recommends is that the city regularly rank and prioritize and monitor its high incident locations, that the city develop countermeasures for those and that you target those for funding and implementation, whether that be through development review, where you can find nexus between development and requiring development to make those types of improvements, whether those can be implemented into fee programs, whether those can be prioritized to grant, to grant funding, which this now makes us the eligible for. Or it's just part of your regular capital investments in making improvements in various intersections. The second priority is addressing speeding. So developing traffic calming programs, implementing various traffic calming measures, deploying speed feedback device like speed trailers, speed feedback signs, focusing speed enforcement at high incident collision locations. The other, the next one, intersection visibility and, and traffic control compliance. It's number three, number five. So improving traffic signals, signalizing locations that weren't previously revisiting. I believe it's measure U that restricted roundabouts. And then for number four, having much less of an engineering focus, but having a concerted effort at reducing impaired driving collisions. So education campaigns, targeted enforcement, and then also engaging with local alcohol serving, serving establishments. So there's a pretty significant toolbox. It's tied to each one of these. There's just not enough time really in, in the presentation to go through that. But that's just gives you an idea of the types of things that is being recommended to be applied citywide regardless of location. So next slide. And so this is an example of, before we move on of what's in those toolboxes is that for traffic signals, where we're seeing collisions that are resulting from red light, you know, not obeying red lights, running red lights. There's new technologies for traffic signals that have been developed over the years and we've made this recommendation in a number of locations. And then, or just any signal is a, any signalized intersection that's experiencing red light violations about new technologies that where it can sense the speed of approaching traffic and it can adjust signal timing to either slow that traffic down through coordination or whether a signal can actually detect if a car is just going to blow the red light, it'll hold the red light on the on, on the other traffic for opposing traffic coming in to make sure that no one's gonna, no, no one's gonna get a green light to come into the intersection when it knows there's a car that's likely going to be running a red light. And this is just one example of many types of things that are in that toolbox. Next slide. So we talked about the citywide systemic improvements. Not specific to any location, but a toolbox. In addition to that, we've also identified 11 locations that or we've developed recommendations for 11 locations. And of those 11 locations, we've actually prepared conceptual plans and cost estimates and then cost benefit analysis. Those include Old Redwood Highway at Gravenstein, also stretching down a little bit further south to include Joseph. Some of, and, and, and most of these aren't necessarily new ideas or concepts. They're actually things that have already been contemplated in the general plan, in your capital improvement plan. Some of these are actually new, new ideas. But in all cases, we've essentially furthered existing ideas and brought in new ideas to be considered as part of future grant applications, like I said, development review or capital or capital improvement requests. So again, there's 11, I don't, I probably wouldn't be that beneficial to just kind of read through, to read through those individually. But as an example, if we could advance the next slide, I'll show you sort of the scale and level that we did for the top five is we actually look, looking at the collision patterns and trends, understanding what the city's general plan is. We've developed concepts at these very early levels. So this is showing highway 16 and, or 116 in West Katati and how that intersection can be realigned and how it can be signalized and how that can provide for left turn movements to and from the side street, how that can tie into future developments in the north. We've developed cost estimates for these, for these intersections for five of those locations. So like, like I said, so they can be integrated into future funding requests and, and things of, of, of that nature. If you could advance the slide, I believe that's all from my portion. I'm going to turn this back to Craig, but I'm here available for any, any questions. And then just want to say thank you to the, to the city and to the council for the privilege of working with you on this.
Thank you, Jake. So just quickly, I wanted to circle around, as I mentioned before, and maybe address some of the, the written comments that we had received just quickly. We received four written comments and three of them were about revisiting measure U, which is the city's ban on roundabouts. And I just wanted to make clear that the plan states that roundabouts are a tool in the toolbox that we have for making intersections safer, for reducing the collisions at intersections. uh intersections safer, for reducing the uh collisions at intersections. Two of the commenters asked about a pedestrian crossing of Highway one sixteen and West Catati. And you saw from the last example that Jake presented, that is a signalized traffic intersection is one of the five um focused improvements that we have conceptual designs for. And in fact, an item on tonight's consent calendar was the purchase of that property to make that intersection square out that intersection and install a traffic signal possible. And at that enters, wi- with the installation of a traffic signal there, there'd be a crosswalk and for to to make that crossing for pedestrians incorporated into that project. I was uh another comment expressed disappointment, the plan did not include specific bike pad pathways. And I would say that the response that the improvements of that nature are included in the bike pad master plan. It's the primary purpose of that plan, which is currently being updated right now. The primary purpose of this plan is to reduce collisions uh incidents uh on our roadways. And so it's of, like Jake said, a very methodical approach to do that. Certainly when um one of these improvements that have been prioritized and identified in this plan come forward into our capital planning and we we implement it. Those other plans uh for bike pad improvements will be incorporated into that project. So just because it's not shown explicitly in the local road safety plan, it doesn't mean that those components would not be incorporated, they they will be incorporated. They, this plan does not live in a vacuum. And then um I want to mention too that two of the comments requested that the fatality late last year near Macklin and Myrtle be mentioned in the plan. And on twenty, page twenty-two of the plan, it does mention that fatality. It is outside the, we we did drop twenty twenty because of the pandemic and it's not representative. But we did make mention and that incident does influence the conclusions of the report. So with that, I'd like to just conclude that the recommendation of staff to adopt a rec- re- a resolution approving the local road safety plan. We'd be happy to respond to any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson, for the work on that. Thank you, Mr. Hudson, for that work. With that, I will open it up to council and I will check Councilmember Harvey.
Thank you, Mayor. I ha- I have a few questions. So in the goals, goal number four states that we strive to reduce excessive speeding behavior, which is the primary contributing factor to traffic collisions in the city, which I wouldn't disagree with. But we've had this discussion every single time we do one of those traffic safety uh speed reports. And the suggested speed limits always seem to be raising the speed limits, not lowering them. So it's encouraging more and more and more speeding because as we've stated again, every time we have these reports, just because it says twenty-five means it's suggested and we'll go thirty-five. And every time we've raised them, it's just gotten worse in some of these areas. Now, to add to that, when I went to the speeding section, it says the possibility to adjust default speed limit based upon certain findings determined by an engineering and traffic survey when necessary per AB forty-three. I didn't know what AB forty-three was, so I went ahead and got it. It's a little bit confusing, but it almost sounds as if rather than just utilizing that engineering and traffic survey, we can consider other things when looking at reducing and or increasing speed limits. So I'd like to understand a little bit more of that. And then lastly, it appears with all of the preliminary design cost estimates and benefit to cost ratios. All of the projects that you put forward, none of them met the benefit to cost ratio of three point five. So that says to me, none of our projects are gonna go anywhere with any of this this funding, this HSIP grant funding. And the last sentence on that says, depending on the city's priorities, it's highly recommended that multiple projects be grouped into one HISP application to maximize potential funding al- allocations. So does that mean if we lump these together somehow our BC ratio will be higher? And then um just lastly, I am hoping um there was a lot of great comments um that were included in the report. I am hoping that um at some point, some of them seem like things that we could take out of this basic process and kind of prioritize them and tick them off as we're resurfacing the streets or or doing other things. I'm hoping that um that might be a consideration because there was a lot of good comments in there. So that's all my questions for now.
And is it okay if we respond to that, Mr. Ma- uh Mayor?
Certainly. I didn't know if you wanted to respond to each one or if you want to wait till the end, but but go ahead because it may address some other questions coming up from the county.
Okay, just just quickly, um Jake, I'll take the first, if you could take the benefit to cost ratio. AB forty-three is really new and it does provide hope for us to reduce those speed limits that were set by the eighty-fifth percentile percentile from those speed surveys. But it is still, it does have still have limitations from what I understand. We would have to go forward and designate safe zones within the city. And I think no more than ten percent of the city can be designated as a safe zone. So we would have to very carefully determine what that tool in our toolbox looks, it's it's gonna pop out looking like. And we are in the process of hiring somebody to 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 go ahead and study what those uh update our speed survey and study what the best way of approaching that is. It doesn't change the fact that those speed limits are you know, as at 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 artist, a tool for us to use to to slow. But there's lots of other tools that we have with street calming, speed feedback signs and and the rest. And so we would, we would very carefully look at how we could use that to our advantage to provide safer streets.
What I read, it seemed very encouraging, so I was ho- hoping that that's what that was, that was all about. So thank you for that because it does give a small bit of hope.
Yeah, I think it's like a five percent drop or a five mile per hour drop in if it's in a speed zone. Jake, do you want to address the? Yeah, so yeah, so in regards to the question about the uh cost of benefit ratios. So the the cost of benefit ratio criteria that's currently in the report reflects the last cycle, the the um the minimum levels from the last cycle of specifically highway safety improvement program funding. There are, so it is true that the uh the projects that uh the highest, you know, the highest collision projects that have been identified. There's just not enough collision uh history to meet the minimum requirements under that last cycle of of the plan for the ones that we've identified. However, um we've seen it with the HSIP program and uh and also other grant funding programs where there's a different priority that's placed uh that's placed on those funding mechanisms where you know, for a particular year, they're focusing on um you know, red light running or they're focusing on something uh individual. So just because the projects that are in there don't meet the um those cost benefit ratios overall, doesn't mean that it through future cycles as they reprioritize what what they're trying to accomplish through those programs. It doesn't mean that those projects won't get funded other tho- uh under those. And I would also say that there are um, there are a lot of other funding sources that this document is designed to take advantage of that doesn't require uh a really high cost benefit ratio, which these are actually very, the three point five is actually pretty high for um uh for, I I would say, these type, these type of projects. Relatively high. And so they're, you know, from active transportation program projects to um just, you know, g- general fund projects to uh, you know, cog or uh, you know, cog projects, any type of grant funding. Any types of other grant funds may not require that high cost benefit analysis. But we are required to put it in there as part of uh the uh, as part of what the format and and the document is supposed to include.
Well, I guess it's a blessing that the ratios are low because we don't really want high ratios, but it it does um as the costs are out there, it does make it a little bit harder to get these done to um, as you put out in your original thing, to have zero zero incidences. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Lemon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I just a couple of questions. One thing that jumps out, and that we've discussed frankly for years here, is a a community concern or perception at least of problems with speeding. And unsurprisingly, it's the number one problem behind a lot of our incidents. And even other things uh tied to it uh speeding up, what was the other term, uh failure to yield. These are all kind of the same different sides of the same coin and they relate to a lack of enforcement of traffic rules. I I would say that our problem that Councilmember Harvey correctly pointed out of increasing speed limits in neighborhoods over the years is because we have been unable to keep those speed limits down by as much enforcement as we'd like. And as such, when they come out to measure, they seem to creep up all the time because this is what people, some people will do left to their own devices now. I get uh it it's, you know, we do the best we can when you have maybe two people on duty a day. All it takes is somebody off on an injury, uh one or two calls and result in paperwork. And there's not a lot of personnel left to do the type of regular enforcement all over the city. But I guess my first question would be, how can we do get that enforced increased? I mean, is there any potential for any personnel time savings from our upcoming SAFE program? It strikes me with them responding to many calls that our officers used to respond to. Do we have even a guess at this point of how much extra uh person power? How many people hours we can put on dealing with the increased speeding and traffic enforcement? That's the first question. If you wanted, you can take it first if you want, or I can just mention a couple other small things. That's up to you. I guess the other thing I'd mention, I I like this plan, I think it's great. This is data that's gonna be really useful, even if we don't quite qualify currently for the current cycle of grants. This is a tool that has us organized and ready to drop when something comes forward. But one concern I have is have now that we've identified all these high incidence locations, what does this mean for enforcement in the neighborhoods, which is already, at least from my perception, not everything I'd like it to be. And certainly looking at the public comments, clearly where so many of our residents live and where their concerns are. I mean, these are both real problems. And lastly, a simple one, citizen volunteers mentioned starting a couple of times on page three eighty-eight to help with speeding or traffic enforcement. I I'm not sure what, how that concept could work. If you could just illuminate me a little in that, so I know what that means.
Well, Vice Mayor, I can uh, I'll just start with the uh SAFE program. So I, we don't know, I think at this point, um it's only been one month. You know what that, what that trend's gonna look like in terms of officer savings yet. You know, we do have a dedicated traffic enforcement officer that um, you know, when he's on duty, he's out there writing tickets. So um, you know, it has been a, that that has been a focus. I, you know, although speeding is, you know, um, I mean, speeding certainly is the contributing factor in in most of these collisions that we're seeing. Fortunately, the the rate of collisions is lower, you know? I mean, you know, in in part, that's, I think in part, that's because you you know, but I, and I have to caveat this by saying I haven't seen the other cities data in Sonoma County. But I know just working out on one six, on Highway one sixteen, you know, a lot of this benefit cost ratio um for H SIP money has been a challenge for us because we don't. You know, quite frankly, when we're, when we're competing against the inner Bay Area where there's a lot lot higher volume of traffic, you're just gonna get a lot more collisions and fatalities and things that would drive up the benefit cost ratio from a Caltrans perspective. So um like, you know, like Jake said, if, you know, there's can be other focused areas that come along that we have different H SIP thresholds and and even in the absence of that, this plan, as you pointed out, is um is great in a lot of other contexts because we can document that we've studied the issues and that we have, you know, a very um well thought out series of capital improvements that we're applying for regardless of the source of the grant, even if it's not based or scored on a, on a benefit cost ratio. So um, so anyway, so they're just with regard to SAFE, I don't, I don't know yet, I don't know how we're doing in terms of um manpower savings. But um, I do know that we have some focused traffic enforcement, you know, whether there's some other strategies we can use a- and the traffic trailer too that we do deploy. But I'll, the chief probably has some more insight on that, he can share.
Yeah, I'll just, I understand the challenges, it's just, I feel like we've been kind of repeating this for years, a concern about wanting to get more enforcement. And and I know there's been significant efforts and effort on the part of the chief and everybody on the team. But uh it it just seems like we're not getting everything we need here. Uh and I, you know, I don't know what the solution might be, but I just want to press that we take, continue to keep that in front of our thoughts as we figure out what we're doing with the, our man hours or our people hours. Because I think it's important not to lose that focus. And lastly, if you could tell me what citizen volunteers are supposed to do, I'd be curious because that that makes numerous antennas go off.
I I I'd be happy to answer that if um if that's okay, okay, yeah. Yeah, so it, th- this is a, this is a a concept that fits very much within the constraints that you're you're talking about. So what we find is uh agencies that have constrained enforcement resources will uh reach out to uh retired uh law enforcement for, you know, professionals or um or community organizations that have um, you know, some sort of background in law enforcement. And although they're not deputized, uh they'll, they'll have a vehicle or they'll have some sort of presence that will make it appear as if there's more enforcement ability uh in in certain areas or just just raising awareness as people pass by. You know, a a, you know, a citizen volunteer vehicle or uh or 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 those type of things. It's not something the city has now from my understanding, but it 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 is something to consider in the future, i- it's, it is a powerful tool um given limited resources. So it's something that we included as a recommendation.
Well, there's a longstanding tradition of Catati occasionally parking a police car somewhere with nobody in it. I suppose this is a minor step above it. I would like to encourage us to actually be able to put real resources out there because I know there's nothing that changes behavior more than when you drive by a regular drive that you take in your daily work and activities, if you see somebody pulled over by an officer, that modifies your driving for some time. And if you drive by a week later and see it a second time, you're converted for a very long time. And 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 that's the goal, not to write tickets, but to reduce speeding so these numbers don't keep creeping up. I I've had plenty of times, thank you for your answers, that was helpful.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Lemon. Councilmember Sparks, I do have uh Chief Parrish raise his hand, but if if it's okay, I would let him speak and come back to you. Thank you. Chief?
Sorry, I'm trying to get my camera working here. There we go. Thank you, Mayor, Council. So just from looking at the uh the presentation tonight and then Vice Mayor's questions, I had a couple of comments. So one, one thing that's not really captured in the report because people won't admit it. I'm talking about drivers and to police officers is distracted drivers. So you saw the seventeen percent others. So I believe that those could be in that category. There's a lot of people on cell phones and that causes collisions. However, they don't confess to the officers that they were on their cell phones. For obvious reasons. So that that is, that is a factor. Distracted driving, cell phone is a factor. As far as the, is this, the, the speed limits goes. So if we, with the LSRP plan, if we have these traffic calming measures and we do slow traffic down, that will affect that, we can affect that eighty-fifth percentile with that, with enforcement, as the Vice Mayor said as well. Enforcement, traffic calming majors, combined, that combined effort, when we have the speed survey, we could possibly lower that speed limit. Uh, so I'm hopeful for that. And I just want Council to know that we, we just entered our Office of Traffic Safety Grant, which um, we focused on speeding, DUI enforcement, distracted drivers, all that stuff that we've been speaking about. Our officers have been doing that. Uh, yes, we have a motor officer assigned to traffic who writes citations, but the other officers write citations as well. And then with COVID, so I know that uh, Council will remember the site program combined with traffic enforcement. And that's when, you know, we go to, it's a combined effort. It's, it's the CHP in all the cities. We go to, we go to, we mobilize and go to different jurisdictions. And they've come to Cattati. We've, we've had like fifteen motor officers out there doing traffic enforcement for like four hours, and that has a long lasting impact. But with COVID, we quit co-mingling, right? Because we don't get, we don't want to um, spread the virus without, without, within all the law enforcement agencies. Um, so hopefully, hopeful in twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, we can bring the site program back as well because it does have an impact. Um, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chief. Um, Vice Mayor Lemon, did you have another comment or question? Or is your hand still raised because you're on the phone? Councilmember Sparks.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so thank you so much for this, this presentation. You know, I know there's been so much work from so many people that have gone into this, and I appreciate all that very, very much. I had one um, concern with the report, which um, I think Councilmember Harvey touched on, really wanting to find a way to incorporate um, some of those um, great comments that we received, a hundred thirty comments um, into action. And um, I'm particularly concerned about some of the public comments about pedestrian safety because it seems in this plan is though we're, we are identifying issues of pedestrian safety and locations where that's an issue based on very, very small number of collisions, like one or two or three a year. And when the number of collisions is that low, we're really not getting a good sample. And that's the, the past history of collisions, I don't think is necessarily a good predictor of where the future collisions are going to happen with pedestrians. I mean, as evidenced by our fatal pedestrian collision that we had last year, uh, which does not show up in one of the incidents of high concern on the plan. There were, of those hundred thirty comments we received, there were eleven comments about people feeling, really using pretty strong language about how unsafe they feel and how dangerous Valparaiso feels due to speeding, of course, which is a systemic issue, but also just specifically the conditions on Valparaiso making people feel extremely unsafe. There were nine public comments about the um, the, 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 the cut, the shortcut people take from Loretto through Benson down to Park and connecting with Myrtle. Um, nine comments about near misses. Well, some of them were near misses with pedestrians, um, people speeding around that corner. Just, just major problems with that particular area. So I was really hoping to see, and I apologize for not bringing this up sooner, um, but I'd like to bring it up now, even though I missed my chance before. Uh, but I really would have liked to see a, some kind of pinpoint on that map that was informed by the public comment. It it seems like public comment was able to, I I'm not sure exactly how it was incorporated, but it wasn't able to put new locations on the map if there wasn't the collision data to back that up. And I, that, that seems like a missed opportunity to me because with so few pedestrian collisions happening, you know, one thing that separates humans from the other animals is we can, we can spot problems before they happen. And we have people telling us there's a major problem on Valparaiso and there's a major problem on Benson. And um, I'm just wondering if there's any way to incorporate that into the plan. If not now, is there, is there a chance to revisit this and revise it in between the five-year cycle? Um, so that, that was my major question.
Yeah, I'd like to go ahead and try to respond to that. Um, that's a great point. That this, this plan does not capture the near misses. It 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 has to be an actual collision to end up having a police report and then getting into the database to be analyzed. And so the only way we get the uh, near misses, which over time would result in real collisions, would be through that public comment. And so those are in, in appendix A of the, the plan. I would, and and I think that the procedure that we have to follow, the very regimented procedure, it's a shortfall, it's a failing of that and maybe over time in the next iteration because this plan has to be done every five years, that they would improve upon that with, with feedback such as this. And um, city staff is not blind to this either. We, we've read those comments. We're constantly with our paving project in putting in speed tables and narrowing roadways and putting up advanced signage and higher visibility. So it's, it's not a very satisfying answer. And I can recognize that, but it is a process and this is an imperfect plan. And I would just suggest that we, we take that comment and enroll it into our ongoing uh, operations at the engineering department and uh, incorporate it, make endeavor to incorporate it into our next five-year plan.
May I follow up with a quick question? Is there somewhere else that those priorities can live in a formal way? You know, like that we can say, look, yeah, let's keep track of this and like, and let's work on it, that it, where else can we put, if they can't, if, if because of the procedural way that this plan has to be constructed, if they can't live there, um, where, where else should we be putting them and keep track of them?
We could have a discussion in our five-year capital improvement program, which is being updated now. It could find some, someplace in the Bike Pad Master Plan, which is also in the process of being updated. So those are a couple, couple spots that I can think of.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Harvey.
Uh, that was really my intention for bringing up um, the comments to begin with. I think that it is too late, given that the ideal that we're trying to get to is zero collisions. It's too late if we have near misses when we could be correcting those ahead of time. And and I think that, that it's important that we start addressing those before they come, become a statistic. So while our numbers are low, we don't want our numbers to get high. So I think that these are some of the areas that I think that we really need to address so they um, don't become problem areas. And that's kind of why I brought up that I think we should prioritize the um, areas that were brought up in um, the comment section.
Thank you. Councilmember Ford.
Thanks. Um, since we're seeming to have the conversation before public comment, I'll insert mine here too. I think that the um, like most things that are Caltrans driven car is king in the development of this plan, and that is also disappointing to me. And uh, so I, I certainly hope that all the pedestrian and bicycle related comments are are forwarded and considered as public comments as part of the Bike Pad Master Plan update and included there. But also I think in that Bike Pad Master Plan, I hope that there's some discussion of how of, of the relative role of that and the, the road safety plan, that we, we consider how those two work together. Because, you know, I, I did a, just a search for bicycle, for instance, in the plan. And while bicycle problems are identified, there are no solutions that are actually specifically bicycle oriented in the plan. And that's probably primarily because that's not what Caltrans cares about. And so it's not in their tools for building the local road safety plan. But uh, they'll get with the program someday and we can be ahead of them on that. And so uh, we need it. Obviously, when, when we're planning projects, we look at both of those documents and, and and we, we handle the stuff that isn't in Caltrans documents through the Bike Pad Master Plan.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Lemon.
Yeah, very quickly, uh, this, I think a very good question was raised. Where can um, response results uh, to the citizen input live? And one thing I want to suggest, we have a newly developed, just as of not much more than a year ago, just earlier this year, I believe, a biannual, I believe, police process review, a public uh, process where we review everything to do with police training, what's going on that year, what improvements have had, and look to do continuous quality improvement. I would think that reviewing traffic data, public input on problem spots, as well as most importantly, are you of what improvements and increases to traffic enforcements have been uh, done or created for that period, that would be a perfect place for that to live. It makes sense for this to be in law enforcement rather perhaps than public works. And it also puts it on a much shorter timeframe. We might not be doing a full traffic plan for that, but it does give us a chance to track, see where we're at. And most importantly, continue to focus in on, I think, what we see as a problem of finding ways to improve our traffic enforcement. So just want to put that suggestion out there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I would just address the comment from Councilmember Sparks regarding Loretto and Benson. It, it is, I traversed that quite a bit during the week, uh, not so much during COVID, but typically. And um, a lot of that traffic ends up coming from our neighbors in the L section that will go down Lincoln where it turns into Loretto and bypass the downtown area and the lights and stop sign. So not only is it our community, but it's also other community members next door that contribute to that as well. Thank you all. And now I will open it up for public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. Looking to our attendees tonight, please use your raise hand icon or dial star nine if you would like to make a public comment. Neil Hancock, go ahead.
Yes, hello, um, Council. Thank you very much. It's good to get this on reviewed. I know we come back and have a look at it every so often. But um, what really strikes me in listening to the comments and appreciating the plan that's out there, this is a local road safety plan. And I just heard the, you know, bicycles and pedestrians are a real side issue on it. So um, I I'll bring up a couple of points as I go along. But my three top issues for this um, plan would be that we revisit Measure U, that it's, it's a, it's, it needs to be part of the toolbox to be able to get safely through junctions and across roads. Right now, we have inherently fast roads where traffic speeds up and slows down. We need it to go safely through the town um, and people to intermingle. Secondly, you know, the design for the safe pedestrian bicycle crossing across State Route one one six. I keep on banging on this, and I'm afraid the presentation tonight explicitly showed the problem. I don't know who did that schematic, but um, and I agree, as I hear, it's just about where it could place on the junction. But surely the pedestrian connectivity should be in full view. It's a, needs to be across. So um, Caltrans does have these Project Zero or it's been mandated. So I think people should be pressing back on Caltrans on it. Um, secondly, or thirdly, um, busy junctions need to be specified where cyclists are. I have every intention of not being a statistic in the future. And so I don't know where I make the input to say something is dangerous at times. One of the ideas that's there is this pedestrian bicycle hybrid beacon, and I think it's a good idea. Um, I would say that for public education, give it a good name, Pelican Crossing. In the United Kingdom, they're called zebra crossings or zebra crossings. So putting a name on it would really help people, I think, sort of understand where it is. Another area that I think is just really missing from a local road safety is, is how do the kids get to the Thomas Page School? I mean, this has just been an ongoing problem. So um, how do other road users, pedestrians and kids are part of the road users? So it really, really should be visible. But I think um, it would be, you know, something that people, that would drive the safety analysis. So um, for speed, we know speed is a problem. There needs to be more um, tools for public works to use. I think curb bulb outs, more of them in places. They have been very successful where they're applying. Myrtle is a long street. It does need to have something in there that drivers don't speed into that long space between the different junctions. There needs to be a way of dissuading drivers from doing cut-throughs that are in there. So I think there's a lot of stuff that I've seen around that does that. I've seen stuff in San Mateo County. And I just think we need to pay more attention to how that speed impacts the drivers, how they actually drive down the streets and speed into the distance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hancock.
Harris Weaver, go ahead.
Hi, thanks again. I am speaking um, both as a Cattati resident and in my role as Executive Director of the Sonoma County Bicycle Coalition. I came with a whole drafted out um, page of comments um, after reading the report, but many people um, have already said much of it this evening. So I'm gonna try to skip to the things that haven't been addressed. I do urge the city to adopt Vision Zero as a goal. I've been involved um, with countywide Vision Zero program and um, love for the city to embrace that. AB forty-three, we were also working, um, you know, past, and I think that it is really going to give us a lot of opportunity to throw out that eighty-five percent rule and actually be able to adjust our um, speed limits. And so I'm very looking forward to when that starts to be able to be implemented. I agree with Pliny Commissioner Hancock about revisiting Measure U and um, bringing back the roundabouts as a potential uh, tool. I understand that this, this document, this report has a very specific format um, related to the H SIP funding. Um, but it, it's, it's frustrating to have it called a local road safety plan when it's a intersection collision reduction, cost benefit analysis. It's great data to have. But as people have already said, it not only leaves out the near misses, but it leaves out the locations where people don't walk or bike because they're afraid, which many other people have always, uh, already um, mentioned. And there's just not enough in there about bicycle and pedestrian safety. Two other things. So um, when I think of the word plan, I think of something that has prioritized projects and timelines and what we're gonna do when. And I don't see that in here. There's eleven high collision intersections and what we could do about them, but not about what are we, how are we prioritizing them in relation to other things? So um, I echo uh, like, how, how does this relate with other things? Or what are we gonna do with this afterwards? And for Pete's sake, if you weren't gonna include the public comment in all those surveys and, and the mapping thing, why did you spend the time and money doing it? You're saying we spent all this stuff and gathered all this data, but we can't put it in the report? Then why did you do it if it wasn't, if you weren't gonna do anything with it? That just seems a waste of public funding, in my opinion, if you're not gonna have a place to put it. What else do I want to say? I think everything else that I've um, think has already been said by somebody else. So I'll, I'm out of time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver.
Jenny Blaker, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, first of all, I, I um, agree with everything that's been said about prioritizing pedestrian and bicycle safety. At the very beginning of the presentation, it was mentioned that um, the number of collisions hadn't gone up very much. But in fact, it looked to me like the number of collisions had doubles between twenty fifteen and twenty nineteen, four years, and they were, um, I haven't got it in front of me, but something like eleven up to twenty-one or something along those lines. That's, that's a bad. That's, that's a bad trend. I totally agree about Vision Zero and city adopting Vision Zero. I can't find in the report, maybe, maybe there and I can't find it, when it lists bicycle collisions or it mentions that bicycle collisions, doesn't, I think, explain whether those are between bicycles or collisions between bicycles and vehicles. And I would have thought that was an important distinction to make and say which, you know, which kinds they are and what causes them. For example, whether it's the vehicle driver's fault or whether it's to do with bicycle education for safety or both. And then I wanted to say that looking ahead to the future, it seems like another really important crossing point on Highway 116 would be at Madrone, particularly if there's going to be more development out in the northwest Cattadi area, west of 101 and north of Highway 16 in the future. And at the moment, as pedestrians kind of take their life in their hands, going across Highway 116 from Madrone to Derby Lane. The other thing is a maintenance issue, which I don't see mentioned anywhere, is keeping the bicycle lanes clear. For example, on East Cattadi Avenue, the bike lanes are often full of leaves, and sometimes in various areas, not only do cars park in the bicycle lanes, but people leave their bins out in the bicycle lanes, all of which cause bicyclists to have to swerve out into the traffic to get around the obstacles in the bicycle lanes. So if there could be some emphasis on keeping bike lanes clean and clear, that would be really helpful. And yes, agree about access to Thomas Page School. I've heard a lot of people complain about all the traffic on Madrone Avenue every afternoon with cars going to and from the school. And as an aside, that's not exactly a local road safety issue. If, if fewer people drove to the school and more people walked or bicycled through the school street tunnel, that would alleviate the pressure on the, on the road there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blaker.
Mayor Moore, that will end the public comment.
Thank you. At this point, I'll bring it back to the council for further discussion. Vice Mayor Lemon?
Yeah, a lot of good input. All I can say, I think it was mentioned that the public comment was wasted. I don't think it was used as effectively as myself, my colleagues would have liked. Let me say this clearly, nothing wasn't heard. We've heard this for years, we've been trying to work on for years. We have had some improvements and some successes, but I hear the public's not 100% satisfied, and I just want to understand, we're not either. This is an ongoing process of resources of trying to do a better job. So hopefully this gets us there. The main comment I wanted to make, I'd be happy to support this tonight, but I did want to reply because I heard a challenge that I liked, I appreciated, and I supported. And that was a challenge for us to do something about Measure U. And I personally agree with that sentiment, but I would repeat that challenge and turn it around. I would send it right back because this is an effort that needs to come from the public. It needs to be supported, it needs to be organized, and it needs to be campaigned for by the public for it to be successful. I guess I'm just going to say, from my perspective, you show me a real and organized and at least somewhat funded, Cattadi level, somewhat funded campaign, because that's where we have to start. And I see the interest, I've seen the change over the years, and I think it's a real potential, but that's where that needs to come from. We, our, our powers are very limited, and one we definitely don't have as a council is to take a vote and wave a magic wand and, and turn that around. It's not as simple as just throwing it on the ballot. So I just wanted to put that thought out there. If there's no further comments, I'd be happy to move adoption of a resolution approving the local road safety program, a plan.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Lemon. We do have Councilmember Harvey, your hand is up.
I guess I just would like to add to that comment. Comments are included in the report, they are Appendix A of the report, so they, they are not wasted and they are in there. I think that, as was pointed out by the Vice Mayor, I think we are frustrated because we are hoping that they, that they don't get lost and that we can, you know, act on some of them that maybe don't rise to the same level as, as some of these other projects, but we don't want to lose sight of them. But they are included in the plan, and with that, I'm happy to second the Vice Mayor's motion.
Thank you. I do have a comment on this or a position on this regarding Measure U. I think that was asinine when that was voted in. I think there was a plethora of misinformation there, and I think it was voted in on a political basis. So several people have reached out to me prior to this meeting regarding the, the local road safety plan and reference Measure U in there. And much like Vice Mayor Lemon, I indicated to them that that is going to be a citizenry issue that they're going to have to take up. But along with that, if that is the direction that the community would like to go, I would be more than happy to support that moving forward. So I think it's, anytime you take something out of a toolbox and you tie planners' hands behind your back in a traffic situation, it's completely negative and contrary to safety. So with that, I have a motion and a second. Ms. Porter, just if you would kindly do a roll call on that, please.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lemon?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Scott, for that work on there, and thank you, Mr. Hudson, for that work on there. And I'm sure we will be taking some of the information from that and applying it as we move forward.
And Mayor, I just, real quick, I'll just reiterate what Director Scott said, is that the comments that were provided, they will be incorporated into the bike and pit master plan, they will be incorporated into the upcoming street, street CIP, and that's where things get prioritized and ultimately funded by the council. So they're, they're not lost. I don't want anyone to think that the comments were for no purpose because they will be captured.
Thank you. It's 9:03. Ms. Porter's probably going to hate me for this, but I'm going to take a seven-minute bio break before we move into the next items, because I think three hours sitting in front of a computer, we need one.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
We will, we will resume at 9:10 if that's okay. Thank you. That expression here, convenience, then they take a mile? Thank you all for that indulgence. We will resume our meeting at 9:11 and move on to our regular agenda. Item 11B, receive and file a fiscal year 2020, 2021 popular annual financial report or the PAFR. And this will go to our Director of Administrative Services, Ms. Quarter. Ms. Quarter, it's all yours. Thank you.
Thank you. So good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, fellow staff, and members of our community who are participating tonight, as well as maybe later in the future. So tonight, I'm providing a brief presentation on the annual financial report to the community, also known as the PAFR, which is my favorite by, report by far, that we do here in administrative services generated for our community. So I'll also provide a little information about overall department goals that are accomplished by creating this PAFR, what the GFOA is, what a PAFR is, and what is included in this annual report. So one of our key goals for our department and administrative services department is to continue to pride the highest level of reporting for our public. So for us, the highest level of reporting is not necessarily the most detailed, the most numerous centric, numerous centric, not the biggest reports, which we do a lot of those, but also those that convey the most information to the broadest population. So some of the other key reports we generate in the course of a whole fiscal year are the citywide budget with its companion budget and brief document, the audited annual comprehensive financial report and its companion, the PAFR, which we're discussing tonight, as well as other reports to the State Controller's Office, the Department of Finance, and individual maintenance of effort reports to various other special agencies, the county, or others that require this information around revenues and expenditures for compliance purposes. Of these reports that are generated, three are eligible for awards from the GFOA, and we apply for them each and every year. We've earned so far three awards for our financial reports as well as our PAFR and four for our budgets. So why are these awards important? What is this GFOA? So the GFOA was established, and it is, in order to pull together resources for highly regarded professionals, in order to create these recognition programs, including reporting awards, to encourage all governments of all types and sizes to improve the quality of their financial management and to recognize that achievement. So reviewers of these financial statements, including the budget, the PAFR, and the ACFR as it is now known, the reviewers include a financial statement preparers, so those are other directors or high-level staff within cities of all different sizes across the United States and Canada, as well as independent auditors, academics, and other financial professionals. When it comes to the annual financial or the ACFR, there are minimum requirements for just the basic financial statements. So no matter what, every government agency needs to create basic financial statements that are subject to audit. And we go above and beyond for our award application, and we prepare the full ACFR or the annual comprehensive financial report that proves the evidence and provides evidence for our spirit of transparency, full disclosure, and wanting to go the extra mile to provide additional supplementary information that inform the rest of the financial information. These reports are also key sources of information for the users outside of the city. So inside the city, it's citizens, staff, and allows us to do other things like we, it informs our bond rating agencies, bondholders, consultants, developers, and other local state government agencies. it informs our bond rating agencies, bondholders, consultants, developers, and other local state government agencies. So, those are our annual financial statements. So, what's a PAFR? It really is just that. It's a popular annual financial report. So, it's meant to be something that's going to be popular with your community. This is a report that's for the real layperson in your community and to provide them the extracted information that's been subject to audit, and it ties back to them, as well as points those laypersons for additional information in that full, uh, audited financial statement, but reports it in an easily understandable format. And there are additional requirements, though, in order to apply for an award for this, uh, document. So, we must submit and receive an award for our annual financial statements. So, it's not good enough to just create the financial statements. We also have to win an award for those financial statements. In order to earn those awards, you have to go through those full review, you have to meet the criteria for every section, and there's always areas for improvement, as everything in life. And so, we have to show that we've taken previous reviewer comments and address them in future versions or revisions of our financial statements. Um, and so, we have to win an award for that. And then, we get to, uh, provide this smaller document, which is based on, um, uh, the a- actual funds within the statement. So, we have to make sure it's not misleading, and we're only showing one fund. Or if we are just focusing on one fund, we have to specifically disclose which fund we are focusing on for the benefit of our community. For us, our financial statements, we want to look at the community in a holistic manner, and so, we do provide all of our funds as a citywide fund statement. Um, the information within the financial matters of the PAFR must be from those gap, find data financial statements, and explanations must also be included for any significant interests or concerns within your community or within the financial numbers themselves. So, our PAFR, our popular annual financial, uh, report is set up to be just that. It's there to be a community-focused report, which includes not only the financials, but a history of the city, the key facts and demographics, photos of our city council members, so when they get to see you out in public, they know what you look like, sorry, get to enjoy that, and lists of services that are offered by the city, or contact information if they just need more information about our financial statements, what's going on in the city, how to reach us to get more information. We also try to brag about what goals were accomplished by the city with the use of their funds, including the continued efforts on transparency and communication on the financial condition of the city, um, the efforts in economic development, uh, support for future revenue goals, and support for continued expanded services, possibly, the community safety outreach programs, including Coffee with a Cop, the annual police department report, and setting up the SAFE, um, program, again, that didn't start until this year, but we were working on it quite a bit last year, and continued work on city infrastructure projects and street and pedestrian wayfinding projects. We most, we must also provide, uh, simplified and accurate financial data that showcases the highlights of fiscal year, which I'll go on to on the next slide, and is also included in packet page four thirty-six. Um, we have to, we do, um, provide for the user readers in the financial data, not only just the one years of data, but we provide comparative data for both the net position, as well as the statement of activities. Um, we also provide summary charts in detail as far as the city's revenues and expenses, as well as two additional graphs that show trends in our net position, as well as our net revenues and expenses over the last ten years. And these are items, uh, especially the trend data, that are specifically because we do the ACFR, the full financial statements, we provide the statistical section, which has to include the ten years of historical, um, trends for those financials, and so, we're able to include those for our PAFR, for our community. So, for the financial highlights for fiscal year twenty 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 twenty-one, uh, we had a net position improvement by three point four million over the last year. This net improvement was primarily with increases, increased, um, unrestricted funds. We had slight increase there of approximately one point one million, and the remainder was due to increased funds, uh, investment in capital assets. So, those are the assets that we, uh, and continue to invest in the streets, street, uh, traffic safety, as well as our emergency equipment. The cash and investment citywide also increased by one point six million to twenty point eight million as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, and the general funds, ending fund balance increased by almost eighteen point five percent to nine point two million. And so, that is one of the few specific funds that is called out in the report. So, the statement of net position is really like a business or a personal balance sheet that shows the assets versus the liability, and the net difference is your net position. This is used to show what the financial condition is for the city as of a point in time, so it doesn't show the change. This is just strictly at the point of time, which will always be June thirtieth for our city, as that is our fiscal year end. And again, this is why it's important for us to show the comparative year-over-year, so you can extract what the changes over the year, even though you might not know the variables in between. So, what is happening in Cattati? Overall, there was an increase in cash, as discussed before, primarily due to delayed expenditures for capital projects due to COVID. Additionally, uh, decreases in long-term liabilities were just very small, and that's just as we continue to pay down those small, um, debt, uh, components that we have. There's additional, uh, information that's specifically audited and subject to audit that goes through in significant detail as to the changes, significant changes in these, uh, financial statements, and that's located within the MDNA, which is packet page ninety-five. So, here's, uh, the net position, as probably, uh, primarily made up of our net investment in capital assets. These investments are the city's infrastructure, such as streets, roads, wells, drainage systems, buildings, and that's all net of the accumulated depreciation and outstanding debt. So, you'll see in here, the decline, major decline in two thousand fourteen and fifteen was driven due to the new financial implementation of accounting rules that required the reporting of the estimated future pension liability, which at that time was seven point eight million dollars. Um, so, again, as things trend back up from that point. So, the statement of activity is, what, what is this? So, this is a statement that includes a detailed, uh, separation of the revenues and expenses. Those revenues are separated from, uh, between general revenues and charges for services or other program revenues. It also includes specific expenses by function, and the, like, which is their department or program that those expenses are, are funding. So, for Cattati, the increased program activities were primarily driven by the water and sewer, or business-type activity funds, which increased by approximately three hundred thousand dollars. We did see some minor increases in general revenues, primarily that was driven from sales tax increases, as well as, uh, sales tax, or sorry, sale tax, as well as cannabis tax. Expenses increased as well, but by less than three percent, and again, that was primarily driven by water and sewer, uh, that charged through from, uh, the city of Santa Rosa. So, this graphic is a great representation to show our citizens or other users, uh, that want a simplified layman's version of where the city's revenues really come from. A lot of citizens, um, believe that it's all property taxes. I pay property taxes, and that's what funds the city, and you know, uh, due to my numerous presentations, that's really a small piece of us for here, us here at the city of Cattati. Not that it's not great, and that's not what we need, but we do definitely rely more on the sales and use tax, as well as that measure G, sales tax, um, for the key parts of our revenue sources for operations within the city. So, for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, the revenue is primarily changed due to increases in charges for services and tax revenues, uh, which were offset by decreases in capital grants and contributions that were received in the last year. So, last year, we received significantly more capital grants, um, than we did this year. So, here's another piece of where, where's that other piece of, so money coming in, and here's our, our money going out. So, for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, it, expenses increased primarily within the public safety and that water and wastewater. So, the increase in public safety is primarily due to the increasing cost to meet public safety needs during the continued emergency operations, as well as, and, and then offset is the increase in water and wastewater, which are due to the cost of purchasing water from the Sonoma County Water Agency and processing the wastewater through the Santa Rosa Waste Management Agency. So, here's another easy-to, uh, digest graph of where you can compare the revenues to expenses and the trends over the last ten years. So, the city's operational re- uh, revenues vary by more, uh, over the years. You can tell they changed dramatically, and those key changes are really due to the grants influx that we receive for key projects at one point in time. Uh, the underlying, uh, component of sales tax and property tax have pretty much, and the general revenues have been, uh, gradually increasing in line with, uh, sales increases and property tax increases. Uh, but then those big jumps are those, uh, grant components. Uh, so, in two thousand nine, two thousand fourteen, two thousand sixteen, we, uh, received approximately three point four, one point six, and four point two million dollars respectively for grants. So, as I stated earlier, uh, a lot of citizens, you know, want to understand better where their monies are going when they pay their property tax bill. So, this is a really great graph to show them that really eleven cents out of that single dollar that they pay in their property taxes come back to the city to provide the services that they've received here in the city, and that the majority really does go back to the school districts in order to fund their operations. So, that's a summary of what's inside the PAFR. So, we also, uh, a part of the initiative and how to get a PAFR award is also to promote it. It's not a good thing to just create a report in a vacuum. You have to get it out to the community and provide this information to the community. And so, what we do is we also generate physical documents of the PAFR. We have them available here at City Hall. Um, you can come and pick them up, come cruise them, have them in your pocketbook while you're going around, uh, the city. And in order to answer any questions for citizens, they might have some information that they want to have, and you can easily provide that. Um, we also have them available at the police department. You want to come here after hours for some reason and prove some financials, but they're also available twenty-four seven on our website in an easy-to-read flipback, flipbook format, which I was excited, uh, just before joining the meeting this evening, I, uh, got some statistics from there. We've already had twenty-nine readers in there enjoying the, uh, PAFR, and over, uh, eighty people joining our full, uh, audited financial statements on our flipbooks. So, it's great to see that we are getting some excitement there and some, uh, interest. But we're also, in order to drive more interest, we'll be doing a trivia contest where, uh, once a week, hopefully, we'll have a trivia question out there in our social media to, uh, promote someone going and looking into the PAFR to find an answer about our city, provide back an answer, and have the opportunity to win a gift certificate or gift card for a local business. So, we're really excited to bring that back again, um, in order to just kind of drive some more support and information to our community, um, for this. Um, so, lastly, I, um, thank you so much for letting me take the time to present this, and I do want to take the time, uh, to thank my staff. I know we take on more and more every year, and I appreciate, and you know, I have pretty high expectations. I want them to do more and do better for our community, and so, I, uh, could not do this without, without them, and I appreciate everything they do, so.
And, uh, Mayor, if I may, just actually add one more thing, because Angelo was too, um, modest to bring it up, is that, um, that the city recently won the GFOA Triple Crown Award, which is a big deal. And, um, you only can win that if you, um, separately win awards for, um, fiscal transparency in the, um, annual financial report, the popular annual, annual financial report, and the budget. So, in all three areas, you have to win an award in a single year. And, um, of the almost twenty-five thousand cities and counties in the U.S. and Canada, about two hundred eighty-two, I think it's two hundred eighty-two, actually win this award, and we're, we're one of them, so. It's kind of a big deal, Angela.
Thank you.
Pass over, yeah.
Ms. Quarter, I, I have to commend you on the work that you've done over the years on these, uh, awards and these presentations, and simplifying our budget and, uh, um, exemplifying what transpens- transparency is really like. Um, as a council member, as a mayor, and as a citizen, I couldn't be more proud of what you do in that department and with you and your staff, and, uh, making this, uh, accessible to the general public. I think it's fantastic. If there are no questions, um, then we will just receive and file this, and thank you so much again for all the work that you and your staff put in on there.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so with that, we'll move on to our next item, which is the council reorganization for calendar year twenty twenty-two. So, I, Mr. Robert, I don't know if you wanted to preface any of this or not, or if you just want me to jump right into it.
Well, I don't know that I need to do much of a staff report, other than the, uh, normal order of selection is the mayor, and then the vice mayor, and, um, whoever selected would be, uh, the January one, so you would fill out the remainder of the calendar year.
And historically, uh, we've gone through a rotational basis on the mayor and vice mayor. But we have had some years where we haven't had council members become mayors, uh, for various reasons. But typically, it's been pretty traditional to, to follow that pattern, so. With that, I would, uh, entertain any motion for a new mayor for twenty twenty-two. Councilmember Harvey?
I would move that Vice Mayor, um, Mark Landman become mayor.
I would second that motion.
So, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Burgess, if you would give us a roll call.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Landman?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Oh, I don't know. I suppose, yes. Thank you very much. Congratulations, uh, Vice Mayor, Mayor Landman. And I would certainly entertain a, uh, nomination for Vice Mayor.
Mister Mayor, if I might, I'd be happy to nominate Susan Harvey for our Vice Mayor for twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. So, we have a motion?
I will second that motion.
And we have a second. Thank you, Councilmember Ford. Ms. Burgess, another roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Landman?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes, thank you very much. And I have to back up a moment. On the previous item, it was a receiving file, so I don't know that we need to open that up for public comment, since there was not an action item on there. Mister Barker?
Uh, we have another agenda item for non-action items, and I think it would be appropriate to take comment there.
Terrific. And this is an action item, although we've just taken the vote, but I will open it up for public comment.
Okay, looking to our attendees tonight, if you'd like to make a public comment, please raise your hand, or rather use your raise hand icon. Mayor Moore, that will end public comment.
Thank you. So, uh, Councilmember, or Vice Mayor, Mayor-elect, Mark Landman, hand your hand up.
Nope, that was from the last thing. It's going down right now.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, now we move on to what is kind of a fun part, which is the, uh, council assignments as representatives and liaisons to various committees for calendar year twenty twenty-two. Um, there are, I don't know if there's any desire at this point, um, to, uh, look at different assignments and/or discontinue particular assignments, but I will bring it back to the council for discussion on there. Councilmember Sparks?
Um, thank you, Mister Mayor. Uh, the, uh, there was an error, um,
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, there was an error on here which has Mark Landman listed as the current member for the Russian River Watershed Association. But I believe that should be Councilmember Ford, and I should be listed as the alternate. Just from our starting point, you know, we want to have.
Thank you. We can make that correction.
Through the mayor, I'm certainly hoping that's correct. Otherwise, I've missed a lot of meetings this year.
Kevin, been wondering where you were.
Yeah, that wouldn't be good. Thank you.
I also sell myself on there as the library rep, which I had not attended all year, but we got that fixed too.
Sure, I did not see you at any of those. Councilmember Harvey?
Yes, on the detail pages, on page 474 for the Sonoma County Waste Management Agency, it says it meets on the third Wednesday. That changed to the third Thursday of every month. Probably change that while we're making those kind of changes.
Okay, Councilmember Ford?
I was going to ask you, Mayor Moore, about the, what the status of the continuum of care program is. And are we soon going to be looking to do a different appointment there?
Not that it's difficult, but you read my mind. Yeah, regarding the continuum of care, the board did vote to adopt the suggested changes through the ad hoc, which means that there would need to be a representative that would cover both Katati and Rona Park on that board. Currently, Rona Park has an at-large assignment on there through the Assistant City Manager, Don Schwartz. So if the council, unless the council has any other direction, being involved with the COC and getting some informational and education on how the process is and the various players are set up, and with the blessing of Rona Park, I would welcome the opportunity to serve on that. As it is a one-year assignment, that would coincide with the end of my term and would allow both Rona Park and Katati to determine how they want to go in future direction on there.
Mayor, real quick on that, I'll just, I'll just add that the the actual COC board position, there is a request for nominations essentially out, both at Rona Park and here. So that's, the thinking there is that that would come back. That particular position would come back at the January 11th meeting for a formal nomination.
Okay, so with that, I will defer on that and communicate with the city of Rona Park and see what they're thinking on there. And I'm sure between the two of us, we'll get a good candidate in there to fill that board position. It's such a critical role in light of all the things that we've been doing these days to try to address some of those issues.
Yeah, we should know more by the 20th, I think, or 22nd, 22nd, I think it was. So by the end of the month, we'll know more about who's interested in the position.
Okay. So if there are no requests to come off of an assignment or to add an additional assignment, Councilmember Sparks?
Let's make a general comment that, you know, I do definitely do not want to elbow anyone out or step on anyone's toes. But in general, I do have a desire to participate more. And if there are any people who are feeling that they'd like to lighten their load a little, I am certainly willing to do more work. And it is, you know, it's a little frustrating to want to get involved and want to learn, start to learn to represent the city. But, but we're so well-represented already that it's hard to get, get your foot in. So that's just a general comment.
I think that's fantastic that you're willing to take on additional responsibilities. You know, REMIF is going to be opening up IACIRA in 2023. And those are some, some pretty interesting documents to deal with. But at this point, I don't know if anybody is looking to lighten their load, so to speak. I don't know.
I'm hearing crickets, so I assume not.
Okay, Councilman or Vice Mayor, Mayor-elect Landman, are you still with us? I don't see your video.
There we go. My audio is going in and out, so I turned the, I'm turning the video off to help with the stream, such as the problems of using a phone. Yeah, I'm pretty comfortable with assignments. However, I am the alternate on a number of assignments. If there is something that's particularly interesting to either Councilmembers Ford or Sparks on some of those alternate positions, if they'd like to move into that position, as Councilmember Sparks put it, to start learning for the future, that might be a good idea. I will warn you, however, when you're an alternate to Councilmember Harvey, she rarely misses meetings. But it's still good because every once in a while, you're needed, you get to, get to know the players and show up. And it gives you a chance to review the packets and just get a feel for how it works. Because it is a multi-year process to get up to speed to work within many of these county organizations and groups. So I'm open to that.
There's also no, I don't think there's any preclusions to shadowing an existing council member at a particular assignment. Just determine if there's a greater level of interest or not. So, Councilmember Ford?
Well, I appreciate that, that offer, Vice Mayor Landman. And the, a couple of the water-related jobs that Councilmember Harvey does, I would be interested in learning more about your currently alternate Vice Mayor on Sonoma Water Advisory Committee and the Groundwater Sustainability Agency. And if either of those alternate positions is one that you would be willing to hand over, I'd appreciate that opportunity.
May I jump in? There's another error. I'm actually the alternate for the Water Management Agency this year. Or I'm sorry, with the Water Advisory Committee.
For Sonoma Water, okay. Well, then the groundwater. Now, I mean, I know that plan is nearly complete, but now it's going to be an ongoing agency, I assume.
Well, Ben, you probably will be around for the next 50 years, right, that we have to implement the plan?
Well, I appreciate you saying I'll be around 50 years.
Well, Councilmember Ford, I hope Councilmember Harvey didn't scare you off by talking about the projected timescale she sees for this work. But if you would like to be the alternate for the Groundwater Sustainability Agency, I think that's great, and I'd be happy to let you take that position.
I would appreciate that. Yeah, thank you.
Very good.
Well, I think it's commendable, the way that people will step up for these particular assignments and are not worried about the level of work on that. And I also think it's commendable that we have a collaborative council that can move through changes and progression and different leadership in such a professional and courteous manner. I look at some of our other neighbors and I'm like, holy smokes. I do appreciate that. So in light of that.
Mayor Moore?
We might, go ahead.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt there if you're still working on some of the current positions. But, but it sounds like where we are with the current positions, at least, is that aside from the changes that we talked about, the changes, just the corrections, I mean, on the existing table, the only new assignment at this point on the existing list of assignments would be the Groundwater Sustainability Agency would, would be the alternate, would go from Vice Mayor Landman to Councilmember Ford. Isn't that right?
That's my understanding.
Yeah, okay. Some other actions just to, just to consider tonight is the, the ad hoc for the COC. So that's, we touched a little bit on that. That's, that it's basically wound down and they're moving to a board now, so. So dissolving that ad hoc would be an action that I would recommend the council take on this item. And then.
As a participant in the ad hoc on the COC, does the COC need to make a motion to dissolve the ad hoc?
No, no, it wasn't an ad hoc of the COC. It was just a ad hoc of the mayors, I think, at the time. It was pretty informal.
Okay.
But, but we had, you know, we had officially made that selection.
Nothing is informal when they have 7:00 AM meetings, I'm telling you.
Yeah, that was awful. And then related to that, so the COC is a bit, it's a bit convoluted. See, you guys all probably picked up on, but the, the board is moving to the new structure, probably in March of 2022. So that's why, you know, we're thinking if, you know, ideally, we can make a decision in January, then we can, with Rona Park, then we can seat a new board member in time for March. So separate to that is a voting member of the COC. And in the staff report, it says that they recommend, well, my recommendation was that the manager just be the voting member, although quite honestly, that could be also Mayor Moore, because he's been involved in the ad hoc. And the only role really of that position is that when the new board gets seated in March, they need voting members of the COC. And so these are not board members. These are just like general members that can vote on board members. And specifically, the board members they can vote on aren't the ones that are appointed. So in other words, you know, there's going to be various appointed members that are just going to be on the board. But there's some other members that are, that are elected. And in the staff report, in the table, there's a, next to each position, there's appointed and then there's elected. And so if it says elected next to that position, such as the advocate or the at-large or the, you know, homeless provider, those are all elected positions. So they, basically, those would be the positions that the voting members would vote on. And again, we don't need to make that decision tonight, too. We could defer that until January. But that's just another thing out there that the council needs to decide who they want to send to the COC as a voting member to select the elected members of the board. So I guess just put a pin on, just put a pin in that one. So we'll be revisiting the COC in January. And then, and then the other ad hoc that we have currently is the diversity, equity, and inclusion with Councilmembers Sparks and Harvey. And it's my understanding, I don't think I'm speaking here, that you guys are still continuing your work on that, so that would just be continuing.
We would like to continue. Laura has set up some more meetings for us and is working diligently to get more set up. And our first one was extremely successful, so I'd like to see that through.
Yeah, so there's, okay, so there's, so there's just a proposed continuation of that ad hoc. And then.
We've got people expecting to meet with us in January, so it would be kind of awkward to discontinue.
That would be kind of bad, wouldn't it, Laura? Well, we're dissolved, so we can't meet with you.
Right. And then, and then lastly, in the, in the item, there's a proposal to potentially create a new ad hoc, and I'll just run through that real quick. So we, the proposal is to create an ad hoc on the housing element update. And this, at least as the proposal is framed, is it would be two members from the council and two members from the planning commission. And as the housing element process sort of progresses through its steps, the suggested role of the ad hoc would be to review the policy goals and programs that are, that are coming through before formal review by the planning commission and council. And I think right now the expectation is it may meet up to twice a month. And so there would be some time commitment, at least for 2022. And normally for these kind of ad hocs to work best, you know, I think we look for a diverse, kind of a diverse group to reflect all perspectives. So that when they preview policies and they get to the formal decision-making process, that it, you know, that it, that it hopefully represents sort of the spectrum of input in the community. And the ad hoc could be, as ad hocs go, they can either be meeting in public or not in public, depending on, you know, what the, I guess, kind of what the.
Right? Mr. Mayor, if I, if I could make a comment, I think Damian said that this ad hoc would be structured with two members of the council and two members of the planning commission. I believe that because it's not just limited to members of the council, it would be a Brown Act body and would be subject to the notice requirements, and the meetings would have to be open in public. We can confirm that. But if your intention is to have a true ad hoc committee meeting where it's, it's not open to the public, that may not be possible.
Okay, so I apologize. I may have misspoke there. But anyway, just, I just wanted to, just to lay those out as other. So the COC board.
Vice Mayor, Mayor-elect Landman?
Thank you. Yeah, I was looking at this. I was a little surprised. I may appear old enough to have been on the council forever, but it actually has only been a little over a decade. I've never seen us do this. Doesn't mean it isn't time for something new. I was just curious. So if we're looking at roughly two meetings a month for this ad hoc, for roughly six to eight months, that's like 12 to 18 meetings. It struck me, that potentially removes a lot of discussion from the public eye on something important and potentially then brings something back that's, I mean, that's an awful lot of meetings, more than we usually have on housing, I believe. And it brings it back more fully cooked, potentially both planning as well as the council, reducing the input of the rest of us. I, I wanted to ask, could we not do something just as easily perhaps with public workshop or perhaps a series of public workshops? This has the benefit of making it, of course, there's no question, that would be a Brown Act meeting, and I think that would actually be a benefit. That would allow public participation and input. But it also would allow all the council, potentially if we did a joint public workshop, the planning commission as well, to participate. A little more cumbersome, but it's, seems to me, I'd just be curious why that wouldn't be workable.
Well, this is Director House. I just want to chime in kind of on the intent. So the goal is, you know, there, we have consultants working on our housing element. They're going to be doing a lot of baseline analysis of, basically identifying the community's housing needs. And then they're going to be putting together, as the manager identified, a set of goals, policies, and then programs to meet those needs over the next eight-year cycle. They're also going to be implementing a significant amount of new state law that frankly continues to come down, even as we're trying to craft all these things. And so we need a mechanism to be able to have someone other than these consultants and staff vetting these policies and providing input on them. So that way, when we do get to decision-making bodies, there's been some buy-in from the folks who are tasked with making these decisions. From the staff perspective, I have no concern over making these meetings public or in a workshop format. But we need a, we need a method to be able to, in some instances, informally review things, in some instances, respond quickly to things. And my concern is the timeline. Because if we get to the end of this and we fail to have a certified housing element, the state takes away our authority over housing decision-making. And I will just tell you, the state just passed another law where they reduced the amount of time that HCD has to review. the amount of time that H C D has to review housing elements. And H C D then compressed all the schedules available to jurisdictions in order to get those documents completed in a draft format into H C D for review. So I just, again, my concern is getting us a successful housing element that is adopted along the schedule, uh, that the state is mandating and also meets the needs of the community.
Well, it's certainly no surprise dealing with the state, uh, having difficult decisions, tough, complex issues to deal with and getting an incredibly short timeline. And we get that whenever we worked with bigger agencies, even the county. And it's, I think it's just a nature of the size and complexity. I don't think it's anything more than that, but it's real. In that case, then, I would say, why can't we use the process that the city manager uses when he wants to pull, uh, and have two-by-two meetings? You can have two-by-two meetings with, you could take two council members once, two council members twice, and then one odd leftover council member another time and get the input and buy-in you need without us doing any mutual Brown Act violations or talking about it together, uh, on an as-needed basis. And that wouldn't require an ad hoc, and that would give you better buy-in, because you'd actually be hearing from all of us.
Well, I also, I also want to get buy-in from the planning commission, because they're recommenda, they're making recommendations as the planning body to the council. Uh, I'm happy to entertain whatever format the council sees as best. I will say what's being proposed is very typical and is being done in, uh, all the other jurisdictions that I'm aware of. However, uh, I am, the format is different in different jurisdictions, though, and so I'm, I'm happy to explore more options. But we need to get this set in place as soon as possible from my perspective in order to meet the timelines that are being mandated.
Understood. I, again, I just, I would prefer, I think, to have a more full involvement. If we're going to do it piece, piece by piece like this, uh, I, I don't want to have a pre-cooked solution that's then difficult to pivot on if three remaining members of the planning commission or the council are unhappy with the buy-in you've got from a minority. That concerns me on something as complex, and as you pointed out, problematic with what's going on with the state. Plus, I, I kind of think it's important the public hears at these meetings what exactly is coming down from the state, because I think they're only finally just becoming aware of it. Uh, I'm open to whatever you want to come up with, but that, those would be my personal preferences at least. So thank you for the feedback on that, that's helpful.
Councilmember Ford. Thanks. Um, I was on the planning commission the last time we did the housing element update. And, um, at that point, the, the process was more clearly, uh, like, sort of worked through the planning commission and then recommended and massed to the, to the council. So I'm wondering if, uh, the, if, if that could more or less be the, the plan, you work with the, you know, the planning commission that is an established body and we have the procedures all figured out and you're, you're working with them regularly anyway to develop it. But perhaps, uh, my, uh, the fear, I think, is that, you know, we get something from the planning commission, the council does, and, and then we tear it to shreds and we're back to, back to zero and we don't have a plan in time. So, um, if, if you primarily work with the planning commission, but at, at every meeting or once a month have, you know, regular updates on, on what the, where the conversation is going, maybe that could handle that issue. So it's, it's not, uh, so things aren't feeling like they're sprung, sprung on a council that has other ideas at the end. I'm, I'm not sure.
I'm just imagining how I would implement policy and direction that came out of that format to a planning commission who's reviewing it formally. That would be awkward from a staff perspective.
I see what you mean.
Mayor Moore, can I ask kind of a historical question? When I was on commission, we, we used to, the, the council had sort of liaisons to the, to the planning commission and to the other, other bodies. And, and at some point that was stopped, and I'm wondering, what the history of that, uh, was, because that was a useful link between the council and the commission. But then, once that went away, that was made it harder.
Mr. Robid, I don't know if you are in a position to address that. I think we talked about this a few years back. And it may have been in regard to not having a lot of activity going on.
Yeah, I think, um, well, that, that may have been, yeah, that may have been one of the issues. I, the, um, the, the primary sort of advice, as I recall it, um, from the city attorney at the time, was that, when you have quasi-judicial actions coming through the planning commission on their way to the council and you have a council member there, um, there's nothing to say that you can't sit there and watch it quietly, I guess, you know, but the concern was always that somehow they might, um, you know, they might somehow get involved in that conversation and it would derail the, the, um, process and, um, because, you know, you, you don't want something on the record that would show that some member is predisposed to some particular action or not before they've heard all the evidence before them. So the advice of the attorney at the time was that you keep them separate, you know, you don't, and, and it's better if they're just uninvolved, you know, the decision is made at the planning commission for a land development project and then it comes to the council. And, um, and they, they base their decisions solely on the evidence they hear at that hearing. Because it would get awkward if, you know, if there were, for example, a council member to planning commission that expressed some opinion about development. It was, I, I don't, I think it was just an abundance of caution is what the advice was at the time.
Councilmember Hardy.
Yeah, um, I agree with what Damian is saying, because having been in that position before and been at planning commission meetings and hearing things and you don't want to say anything because it will come before you. It's a little frustrating for that person being that liaison, because especially if things are coming up that you know, as, I love the way, um, Councilmember Ford put it, that when it comes to the council, they're going to shred it to bits. Um, it's kind of hard, um, to be in that position also, so, um. Yeah, it's a difficult thing. I almost, it, it sounded like Noah was open to having, um, open meetings, but with the smaller group. And maybe that's, maybe that is the way we have to go if it can't be, um, separate meetings. But I agree with, um, Vice Mayor, Mayor-elect Lammon, that it's kind of hard when you don't get everybody's input. But without having meetings, joint meetings with the planning commission and the council on a very, it sounds like, very frequent basis, I don't think Noah's going to get what he needs, um, to get this done in the unrealistic timeframe given to him.
Yeah, I, I'd just like to say, uh, I, I'm open, as I said, to any format. The goal is just to get a broad perspective of council members and planning commissioners to be able to, and to give them the opportunity to, to provide their input upfront and early to try to represent and get in front of some of the issues that Vice Mayor, uh, Lammon's identified, because I think that's absolutely correct. And I, I will just point out in my experience, um, council has a lot of, of, uh, input and to provide on these legislative actions that are coming. And so I, I'm interested in, in getting council input as early as possible to try to get some traction on the process and, and keep momentum. The idea behind the two-by-two is frankly just to minimize the amount of, uh, staff commitment that's necessary to get this work done. If we need staff to step up, you know, we could talk to the city manager about dedicating some more resources, it's more work on Lauren. We can check, we can cut back on the number. That was a worst case. Uh, as policies are coming fast and furious and we're responding to those things, that, that was kind of my anticipated worst-case amount of time commitment. So once a month, uh, I think we could, we could do effectively. And then the other thing I can commit to do is just bring ongoing monthly reports, status reports to the entire commission and council. I think I, I could absolutely do that. The council gave community development a, an additional resource. We're, we're, I think successfully been able to hire someone who I think is going to be excellent. That person should be able to take some of the load that I'm working on currently and then it'd give me time to focus purely on the housing element. To be able to kind of commit to that extra time. I, I think that's workable, too. Just to, as you discuss and, and kind of think about options, just know I, the regular updates and providing input, no problem on that. We could just have a standing item on the agenda.
Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Lammon, did you have another question on there?
Well, I think Mr. House probably kind of solved and kind of went kind of the direction I was going to go. Uh, I liked the way Councilmember Ford put it, that having the council shred, uh, something that the planning commission has done to bits, and I'm sure that's frustrating, and I'm sure you've seen it in the past. Now it's your chance to do it to them, but, but you know, that's, that's not surprising. We have different viewpoints sometimes and we have different responsibilities and areas of responsibilities. And I do honestly feel that the council should reserve the right to have time to adjudicate the housing element to the degree we're able to adjudicate or guide it, um, as a group. And I do fear that if it's something that comes in front of the whole group at the last minute, we will be in that situation. So if this was done in some manner where there were regular check at the input that you're looking for, the real buy-in that you want, that might well work. Because if we're going to, if you have to have open meetings anyhow, it looks like to be able to do the, uh, council slash, uh, planning ad hoc you were thinking of, you might as well do it with the whole group, so this might be a better way of doing it, I think. And then you could get feedback from all of us.
The, the other concern is it will, it's just going to put more focus on me, because the consultant didn't budget for this and, and to keep the project in the budget. But again, um, just, the staff reports may be very, very, uh, sparse and concise, yeah.
Understood, and if any of us complain, you can remind us, particularly me, of that.
I think the term is succinct. Councilmember Sparks.
Thank you. Um, Mr. House, I just, I really want to say I really appreciate you being in front of this and being proactive and sort of anticipating that this is going to be an issue and, and really thinking through how to, how to handle it. So I appreciate that. And, um, I, I think the idea of an ad hoc is fantastic as long as I get to be on it. So I, I sort of agree with, with, uh, Vice Mayor, soon-to-be Mayor Lammon, that, that, um, it is a problem if we can't all be on it. It might not work so well, so, um, yeah, I, I, I think, um, as far as short reports, verbal reports are, would be great. I mean, just, eh, eh, regular check-ins, I think, are a great idea and, um, I, I hope we can do that.
Thank you. Councilmember Ford.
I do think there's a lot of value with, and, and if there are a couple of people on the council who are interested in, in diving into this more and being more involved, I think then it would make sense to, to have a smaller group that, that, uh, maybe spends more time and that would then necessitate probably some kind of Brown Act support from staff. So, um, but if everybody wants to be on the discussions, then I think we'll need to do it the way Vice Mayor Lammon said and, and just do it at council meetings. So, uh, as Councilmember Sparks, I would be very interested in being in such a group if we wanted a smaller group.
So, um, I, sorry, uh, Mayor Moore. So it sounds, uh, so correct me if I'm, if I'm misstating this, but one option would be to, uh, just do a full, um, joint meeting, right? Between the planning commission and the council, and that's probably once a month, probably not twice a month. I don't know, uh, Noah, it sounded like, sorry to ask the question, sort of in front of everyone here, but, um, it sounds like that would probably be frequent enough to get the input you need, um, with maybe some informal check-ins, uh, if necessary from time to time.
Yeah, and I'm even thinking, rather than trying to, uh, ask the commission to commit to a third meeting a month, just two separate standing check-ins, that then I can inform each body of the other's direction and then try to keep the consultants up to speed as well, um, and then probably come together at, at maybe a couple of times as joint meetings as needed as we get closer to, um, having a draft document.
So you're, you're proposing, um, an option that would, or you're floating an option where we just continue our regular meeting schedule with updates as part of that meeting schedule with an occasional joint meeting?
Correct. It would just be a standing agenda item.
Okay, so in that particular situation, we wouldn't necessarily need the ad hoc on there? Uh, Councilmember Harvey?
Uh, no, I guess this is a question. It seems like a lot of the, um, planning commission meetings, um, get canceled. Are you thinking that all of a sudden because of this, they are not going to be canceled anymore?
Yeah, the, the, the main reason we cancel, uh, commission meetings is, is for a lack of projects.
Right.
But so if we have this standing item where we know we need feedback, we, we just, even if it's the only item on the agenda, that's what it would be.
Okay.
I also try to be efficient with time, and if there's one item that can get pushed two weeks, then we just will cancel the item and have two versus one item meetings, we'll just consolidate them and have two items on the agenda.
Because, I mean, it seems to me that, that, um, those meetings are kind of already, the public knows about them when we have them. And that might be an opportunity for us to, uh, because we seem to have plenty of stuff on our own agendas. That might be an opportunity for us to join their meeting, um, to kind of get all of us together.
Uh, so the joint, you're, so the joint meeting dates could fall on the commission meeting dates, is, uh, you're, you're suggesting?
That's what I'm suggesting, since, um, you know, a lot of them don't have, um, a lot of meat, because, like you said, there's no projects. We seem to always have a full agenda, so it kind of might make more sense for us to join them on a periodic basis. I know I'm, probably everyone's going to hate me for that, but just a suggestion.
That's very helpful to me, thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Sparks.
Thank you. Um, I, I don't hate you, Susan. I, I think that's a good idea. I, I think that makes a lot of sense. And, um, also, uh, no, I just, I wondered if there's room in that for, you know, there's ten of us, right? So would there be room somewhere in that plan to just set aside a time to meet with us two at a time once to, to do like a little focus group type of thing?
Uh, I'm absolutely, uh, able and interested in doing that. So, um, I think things will really start to pick up as we get through the holidays and then, um, into probably later January, so I'll have more, uh, kind of real information to convey at that point. So absolutely, that's a good option and, and, um, we may need to exercise it to, to meet this schedule.
Councilmember Ford. Uh, I agree that Councilmember Harvey's suggestion of using like an hour at planning commission scheduled meeting as the joint meeting time makes a lot of sense. And, uh, just want to emphasize that I think those joint meetings are going to be really important to making the project, the, the plan sort of make it through, uh, cleanly. So I, I think relying primarily on you talking to both groups independently is, it's going to go a lot smoother if we actually talk face-to-face some.
Yeah. So, uh, so, uh, sorry, Mayor. So it sound, so it sounds like what I'm hearing, um, is that there would be a standing joint meeting likely on a, on a planning commission meeting day. Probably just as a, just as a standing item once a month. And then other sort of meetings as needed along the way. Does that sound right?
My understanding.
And I would just suggest, before we actually formally schedule that, let's hear from the consultant about what the major task I'm anticipating is getting an update to the housing opportunity sites map, which I'm, I'm sure both bodies are going to want to provide input on, because that's going to actually give some deference to specific sites that housing will be built on. Then the, uh, kind of consideration of the housing needs assessment, right? So that's a document that, that identifies what the needs of the community are. And then, um, policy, programs and goals. I think the goals will probably be the easiest of those three for everyone to agree on, but then But then what comes out of that is gonna be the policy and the programs. And I think those will be the places where kind of the rubber will meet the road.
Thank you. Uh, Vice Mayor Lammon?
Thank you. Through the mayor real quickly. Yeah, I just wanted to either correct something or perhaps have my perception cleared up if I perceived it wrong. What I had heard from Mr. House was that we were going to, or what he proposed was having a regular standing item, both at planning meetings and at council meetings to get input and, and share information on the housing element. And then to have joint meetings, uh, as needed, but not on a regular monthly basis. I didn't think there would be more probably down the line, but that was the one I understood that was flexible. And, and then with the addition to that, that Councilmember Harvey put forward, that we schedule those on a regular planning meeting. No sense doubling Mr. House's work or the Planning Commission's work if we can do it that way. So that's what I understood. Did, did I get that right, Mr. House?
That is my intent and what I'm imagining is the, uh, the information that's presented at those standing updates will then direct when we need to have a joint meeting and get everybody together to kind of crystallize the support or opposition, um, or need for revision to all those pieces I just mentioned.
Perfect. Uh, I, I fully support that. I, I regret that it's more cumbersome, but I suspect it might get us, have a better chance of getting us across the finish line in time cleanly than perhaps going the other way. There's, there's risk involved there. So, uh, so thank you for that. I would be happy to.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. House, what's the accelerated, uh, conclusion date?
So there's even more kind of nuance to it. So the consultant has requested that we take the time to evaluate all of our housing opportunity sites and then the, the communities that need to rezone be prioritized in their list of cities, uh, that they kind of are working on. The consultants are doing numerous housing elements throughout the county. If you need to rezone, then you need to accelerate that because you have to have that completed before you can have your housing element certified. And there's all kinds of crazy penalties and timelines, 90-day, 120-day due dates. There, there's just a lot that's coming down. And as I mentioned, these things are kind of changing on the fly and, and Mr. Barker may even have some additional input. Um, but so the, the consultant has said, hey, let me please just do a baseline analysis to see who has enough capacity in their current zoning, which frankly, I think the city of Cattati does because of the downtown and the San Taro specific plan has a lot of, of essentially pre-zoned sites where a, a, a large number of housing units can go, definitely enough to accommodate a arena. So we're not likely to require rezoning to meet the Rena needs. They wanna look at the other cities that they're working on, the ones that will need it in order to meet Rena. They need to stop on the gas in order to get them further down the line. So that's kind of part of the discussion as to who's gonna get their attention first, which is why I can't quite give you a good answer to your question.
Thank you. So it appears that we do have direction on, um, what we're gonna do with the planning at city council. So that's good there. Um, if there's no further questions, I will open this up for public comment before we have any, uh, motions on this, on these items.
Looking to our attendees tonight, please use your raised hand icon if you'd like to make a public comment. Mayor Moore, that will end public comment.
Thank you very much. So that means we're looking for two motions. Um, I would entertain a motion initially now for the discontinu- discontinuance of the COC ad hoc. Councilmember Ford?
I move that we discontinue that ad hoc as of the first meeting of the COC board.
I'd be happy to second that.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second, Ms. Burgess, if you would give us a, a roll call, please.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lammon?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes, thank you very much. And then the second motion that we would need would be to adopt the assignments as amended?
So moved?
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second on that. A roll call, please, Ms. Burgess.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lammon?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes, thank you very much. Do we have, that's my Elvis impersonation, by the way. Do we have, um, oh, now we would move on to our, um, city managers' report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So, um, just a, a couple of reminders. The COVID testing is, um, every Tuesday and Wednesday, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. at the St. Joseph's parking ride. That still continues. So, um, appointments are recommended there. We just, uh, well, we're a little over a month into, uh, the safe program and, um, just a, just a reminder that this is, uh, this program, the Mobile Mental Health Crisis Response Team is to respond to people that are in mental health crisis as well as, um, under the influence of drugs or alcohol and can do minor medical, um, complaints and deal with minor medical complaints as well. And it can be accessed by dialing 911. Um, this week, we're still collecting toys for the holiday toy drive, uh, through Friday, the 17th, at the, at the police department or the Rancho Adobe firehouses. And, um, Santa will be delivering those toys the Saturday on the 18th. So, um, look for that soon. So a little, a quick update on the West Side Street project, uh, they, uh, the contractor just did Old River Highway between, um, Page and Myrtle. So that segment of road that was in pretty bad shape is repaved. They're still, doing other work on it, raising the utility, um, covers back to grade and, and have to stripe it still. But, um, the rest of the work is gonna progress as weather allows. So it's gonna be kind of hit and miss, I think, you know, but we'll all get done. The weight finding sign program along the creek in downtown, that was a little delayed, but, um, we're expecting installation to start in January. A reminder that, uh, for the housing element, by competitive master plan updates, you can go to our website and, um, sign up to make sure that you receive updates on that if you're interested, if anyone is interested in staying abreast, uh, on those processes. And then, um, with recreation, uh, over the next two weeks, we're hosting our winter break camp. And, um, it's gonna be Monday through Thursday each week, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at the community center here. So, um, you can sign up online for that and it's gonna be the, the two weeks through December 26th. We also in January are starting a music together class for parents and children from birth to age eight. Um, kind of interesting. I can't imagine eight-year-olds in a music together class, but I guess in theory, the registration's up to age eight. And then a whole bunch of other types of fitness classes, including zumba, zumba gold, makedo, pre-ballet, hooker and many more that all can be registered for on the city website. And, um, with that, I would be happy to answer any questions if there are any, an update.
Thank you, Mr. Robid. Do we have any questions from the council at this point? None? Okay. Thank you so much. Um, now we will move on to city council member reports. Councilmember Harvey?
Yes, I have one thing to report and that's that the, uh, Santa Rosa Basin groundwater sustainability, um, plan was unanimously approved by the, um, the Sigma Board. And so it will move on in its process, um, to the state. So a lot, we got a lot of really great input and all the staffs have done just a tremendous job getting us, um, to where we're at. And as, um, the plan manager said, now the work begins for the next 50 years. So, so here we go. Now we have a plan. So now the work begins. So there we go. And the only other thing is I attended, um, the Santa breakfast, uh, last Saturday and it was really a great event. And I appreciate all the work that went into that because staff did a really great job. So that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sparks?
Thank you. Uh, the Health Action Committee met on Friday. Uh, there were two points in the meeting. Um, there was a discussion of the Portrait of Sonoma County report that's coming out. And, um, we, Sonoma County ranked fourth place in California in the, in terms of, um, the Human Development Index, which is a more holistic way to sort of measure economic and health well-being. Um, I think above us were San Jose Metro Area, San Francisco, Oakland, Berkeley Metro Area, San Diego, and then the Santa Rosa Petaluma Metro Area, as they call it, um, was the fourth in California. Uh, within our county, the highest human development index area was Bennett Valley East and the lowest was Roseland. And there was a massive disparity between those two areas. So some of those, um, I'm still trying to find the data for Cattati. I was trying to dig through and find out and I, I hope to bring that back to you next time so you can see where we, where we rank. Um, but that will inform the, um, the, the action agenda that Health Action will take on in the coming year. Uh, the other thrust of the meeting was that Health Action is, has been going all year through this process of, um, trying to understand what doesn't work about Health Action and what does work and, and reinventing itself as Health Action 2.0. So it's going to be relaunched in, uh, next year as Health Action 2.0, which will be a more of an independent public-private partnership. And the timeline is that in, uh, January and February, they're still sort of determining what it's going to look like and what the structure will be. And hopefully by March, start to, uh, develop an implementation and transition plan to Health Action 2.0. Um, and then I also have a report for ad hoc committee. Um, we, uh, we are setting up a whole bunch of meetings with HOAs and resident groups and we're going to host a meeting for, um, turns out that Burbank, uh, properties are not allowing residents to use the common rooms because of COVID. So the city, we're, we're setting up, uh, to host them, uh, back behind City Hall, uh, to be able to meet with them. And one last thing, uh, as a member of that ad hoc, I, I was interested to attend, uh, Petaluma's meeting last night. They had a very long meeting to receive the recommendations of their ad hoc, similar ad hoc committee. And there were several, uh, outcomes that the council identified as priorities. There was a major focus on, um, diversity, uh, equity and inclusion in hiring and talk of hiring a consultant to, um, help the city with improving their hiring and retention practices, recruitment, uh, for diverse candidates. There was discussion of whether to, um, create an office of equity within the city or to continue the, um, the, at, the, the commission that's been ongoing and to sort of carry that forward into the future to help continue, um, advising the council on, on those issues. And I, I don't think that it was decided really by the end of the meeting, but there, there was discussion of the pros and cons of both. And then there was a, uh, unanimous, I, I believe it was unanimous support for, uh, implementing civilian oversight of the police force. And they, um, had not in any way decided what form that was going to take or what it was going to look like. And we're discussing sort of how to go about making those decisions, but there was support for that. So, um, I just thought it would be appropriate to provide y'all an update on what our neighbor city is doing there. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I don't really have anything to report out at this time except for, uh, the Rona Park Cattati Library is offering multiple programs for, um, students, teens and adults during the holiday break. So I would encourage you to look, um, to look that up online for those that are interested. Uh, they've got some wonderful programs. I think you saw the new, uh, biblioboss at the tree lighting. I thought that was a great little addition to the library services. And, um, that's all I have as far as, uh, city council reports. Now we will move on to public comment on non-action agenda items.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. Looking to our attendees tonight, please use your raised hand icon or dial star nine if you're using your telephone if you'd like to make a public comment. Mayor Moore, that will end public comment.
Thank you so much. Um, I think the information received after the agenda was posted was, um, incorporated in by, uh, uh, Mr. Scott, if I remember correctly.
That's correct. And there's nothing further.
Thank you very much. Um, with that in mind, um, I would like to, um, consider, um, adjourned a meeting and, and memoriam to those that have, uh, been devastated by that tornado that swept through the Midwest, Kentucky and Illinois. I think it's horrific. And then finally, um, I would say that, um, it's been an interesting year as being mayor with everything being virtual. Um, you don't, you just don't have that connection. But I, again, I think that our staff and our council and our planning commissioners have all been wonderful under such, um, circumstances. So it's been an honor to work with them in that regard. And finally, and last but not least, I would wish everybody a happy holidays, uh, until we meet again next year. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting at, uh, 10:31 p.m.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Thank you, Mayor Moore, for your service.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. It's a lot of work and we, we appreciate it.
Oh, you'll have, you'll have plenty of time for that. Hey guys, have a great holiday if I don't see you before then.
Take care. Yes. Happy holidays.